But it's like that. And you know, we will look at the math for this. We looked at all of that.
Hey. Hey Bob. Maybe you could do a little recap for him. Co-sponsors on drone.
It'd be helpful because now we're all getting some feedback on it. Well, I have a great mind.
He's been my rodeo fan.
Yeah, I know.
I've been here as well, too. It's like, first question is, did you read yours? No. And it's like, how about reading yours that's before you started?
We read the synopsis. The cliff notes. So we're not going to bog down in any kind of legal fight. Rules. Yeah. Yeah, use your drone bar.
At home?
You're at home right now. Oh, right.
No, no, that one was like, blue, dude. They have four stamatic.
Yeah.
Three minutes. Three minutes, Regina.
Three minutes.
It's kind of.
That's right. Wow. That's a solid legal argument.
Why don't you tell this drone thing in front of all your students another day? Let them go ahead.
Down. Ooh, did I, I didn't bring my stuff.
Yeah.
It's an implied side, okay? Where is the brush?
Yeah. Run with that.
See how that works out, bud.
Oh, absolutely.
How do we ever know if anything's really legal until we have the course decided? How do we ever know if anything's really legal until we have the course decided?
I got coffee break now.
He's the best. I'm excited over here.
I was doing some section next year they start, remember the reindeer session?
Yeah, yeah.
I can't even respond to you right now.
That's fine.
Doing things like.
Didn't need to respond.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand. Someone's kind of talking about the picture and stuff about the problems. Just like my uphill.
Okay, we really got the, uh, we should, no, we have, uh, that's thanks, though.
Yeah, that's, uh, thank you. We got two minutes.
Come on, Tess, listen.
Oh. We do.
And as Kylie clears.
Good evening. The Monday, September 24th, 2018 Common Council meeting is now in session. Our invocation is by Pastor Michael A. Patton, Kingdom Life Christian Cathedral. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Let us bow our heads. God in heaven, we thank you for the success of this day thus far. We honor you and glorify you as our creator and sustainer. We praise you for your excellencies and for health, life, and strength. We implore your presence here today for this city council meeting. We pray for our mayor, Mayor Pete Buttigieg, our council president, Tim Scott, and the council members that are present on today. We pray that you give them strategy and wisdom with solutions that will address the needs of our city. We pray that as they address budget concerns, that they will be fair and equitable in how they find and fund departments, projects, and areas of our city that need resources. Let there be a unity among them, that the challenges of our community are met. Now, God, we bless and pray that you bless those that are present and in attendance on tonight, and all that will participate. We pray that your blessings be upon them. In Christ we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Our point leads to fire from the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, unredoubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. If you would, please turn your cell phones to silent. Ms. Fowler will call.
Councilmember Preston?
Here.
Councilmember McBride?
Present.
Councilmember Burley?
Here.
Councilmember Tesco?
Here.
Vice President Davis?
Present.
Councilmember Gordy?
Here.
Councilmember Furley?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Present.
President Scott?
Present.
Nine President.
Thank you. Report on subcommittee amendments, please.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the September 10th, 2018, meeting of the common council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Much to your favor.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. There is no special business. Uh, there is no reports from city offices. We'll, um, would like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules and move Resolution 1853 to the top of the agenda.
Send it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. With that, we will hear Resolution 1853. Um, Ms. Fowler, would you please give a reading to that?
1853, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as lot five, U.S. 31, industrial park phase two, and economic revitalization area for purposes of a nine-year real personal property tax abatement for National Distribution Centers LLC.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, community investment sends this forward favorably.
Thank you. Uh, is there a presenter, Ms. Sir?
Good evening, Council. Uh, Dan Buckenmeyer, uh, director of business development, DCI, working for this building. So we have a phase in, a property tax phase in proposed for, and I always like to again, bring us home to what the parcel we're talking about. So we're talking about in Portage Prairie, Dillon Drive, uh, just north of Cleveland and Rick there. Uh, about a 20-acre parcel that we're dealing with here, uh, for this phase in. This is a great opportunity to keep a great company here in South Bend. Um, as a side note, and I know that our petitioner will expand on this, um, the petitioner had, uh, good reason not to locate in South Bend, but a few good reasons are keeping him here. One is the partnership and potential tax abatement offered by the city here. The other is a great workforce, which we're really proud and happy to say. 108 fantastic employees that they want to make sure they keep, uh, in place here in South Bend. A few quick notes. This parcel, uh, in January of this year assessed at 23.5. They're going to be purchasing it at a, in the neighborhood of a million dollars. So again, this is, bodes well for, uh, raising property values and rising property values. Uh, their private investment in that real property then, that, uh, blank space, if you will, that open field, will get over $14 million in investment in building and so on, in their cross-stocking facility. And they anticipate an additional four-plus million dollars in personal property or machinery and equipment. Uh, it's a great project, given that this is a property, 20 acres, presently generating only $705 a year in property tax revenue. And our estimates are that it will generate over 300, uh, $312,000 a year in revenue post-investment. And just breaking that down real briefly, um, if you look over the nine years of this tax abatement, uh, if this investment didn't exist, we would own, the city would only enjoy an additional $6,345 at that $705 a year, uh, in, in, uh, property tax revenue versus even with the abatement of, uh, over 1.6 million, uh, they will be investing still over 1.1 million in tax revenue to the city. So, uh, and, and another quick note, um, when you look at, uh, Councilman, uh, Davis had asked, uh, in previous times, you know, where's the breakeven? Where do we start making money? And it's a very great question. Um, in this case, we're revenue positive in year two. In fact, we're revenue positive in about 33 days into year two, which is a fantastic story. So again, private investment of 14 million, no public investment in this one, so in other words, TIP dollars, there are no TIP dollars going into this. We're only doing a tax abatement. This is the real property side. We do anticipate, um, uh, helping them out on the equipment side later on, when they get further down the line and make some of their capital investments and so on in this property and into putting equipment and so on into the building that they're building. But again, retaining 108 jobs and a great workforce here in South Bend, we think it's a very good news story. So Troy Adams from, uh, NFI is here, and I'm going to turn it over to him so that he can tell you a little bit more about them and, uh, the petition.
Thank you, sir. If you would, please state your name and address and give us a brief synopsis of the program or the project.
Great. Uh, Troy Adams, I'm director of real estate for NFI. 1515 Burton Mill Road, Cherry Hill, New Jersey is the address. Thanks, Dan. So I'm here on behalf of NFI. Uh, NFI is a privately-held, uh, third-party logistics company headquartered in Cherry Hill, New Jersey. Uh, we're in our 86th year of doing business, uh, still owned by the same family. Started out in Vineland, New Jersey, 1932, with one truck. Uh, company now, uh, owns over 4,000 trucks, employs over 10,000 people, uh, has a presence across North America, U.S. and Canada, uh, but we do global logistics. So most people know us for our trucks. Uh, however, we operate about 47 million square feet of warehouse, uh, space across the U.S. and Canada, um, and have continued to, uh, grow with the economy and, and on our own through some acquisitions. So we've been in South Bend, uh, for about four years now. Started out with a facility in Ohio, uh, uh, decided that we needed to move, uh, more into the central part of the upper Midwest, uh, located a, uh, warehouse in, uh, South Bend on Sample Street where we currently operate. It's a sublease. Uh, our sublease expires. Uh, we fought long and hard about where we go when this sublease expires next year. Uh, we embarked on a search about six months ago, um, throughout most of Indiana, so from Indianapolis north, um, really centered on the 69 corridor, um, and think of like Fort Wayne as kind of where the pin on the map should be. Uh, looked at sites, contemplated buying a site by the airport in Fort Wayne, um, and the math, um, for the transportation cost for our model shows that we should be in Fort Wayne, uh, because of where we distribute. So we distribute product throughout, uh, Indiana, and to move south from here is more beneficial because our trucks can go further south and then they can still go north, uh, east, and west. The reason we are making the decision, uh, hopefully with your support tonight, to stay in South Bend, uh, is 100% based on the employment that we have here at the facility. So we employ a little over 100 people today, 108. Uh, about half of that are drivers, um, the other half are warehouse personnel. Uh, in a 3% unemployment economy, to rehire over 100 people, uh, 50 truck drivers and 50 warehouse personnel in a different part of the state, uh, we think would cause, uh, quite a disruption to the operations. Uh, we're thrilled with, uh, the associates that we have here today. The operation runs phenomenally well, so kudos to, uh, all the economic development people in the council for any workforce programs and other, uh, uh, programs that you've put out, uh, because we've got a great workforce here in South Bend and we're pleased to expand. We're looking to move about seven miles to the north, uh, to the aforementioned parcel on Dillon Drive in Portage Prairie. Uh, we currently earn 156,000 square feet in a lease. Uh, the project that we're contemplating is purchasing the 20 acres and constructing a 232,000-square-foot facility that we would own and operate. This is a concept elevation. There'll be a concrete block, modern distribution center. And this is the site plan, doors on both sides, uh, parking for all the employees, parking for the drivers. Uh, we expect construction. It's an aggressive timeline, but, uh, with the city's support, um, we anticipate construction taking about a year. We'd start, uh, before the winter fully sets in. We'd finish, uh, about a year from now. Uh, development costs, as mentioned, are $14 million. They're all privately funded by NFI. We expect to invest about $4 million in machinery and equipment into the building, uh, for a total capital investment of $18 million.
Thank you. Right now, Council, any questions for the petitioner or the presenter?
Do you really have to leave the sixth district to go to the first?
Here, here.
I mean, I'm glad you're staying in town and everything. I wish we could find a spot for you on our side of town, but I'm still glad you're on the west side and.
We'll write you for the ribbon code.
All right, I appreciate it. I tell you, we enjoy your last year on our side of town.
We will, and I'm concerned.
I tell you, bless your heart. Moving forward. Thanks for staying in South Bend, bud. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ms. Preston?
Um, as we spoke about at, uh, committee, just for public record, um, could you, um, just for clarity, if you did not get this tax abatement, would you still stay in South Bend?
We would make the move south.
Um, also, um, you have, I've heard from my constituents on a number of occasions, some concerns about the, uh, business dealings and the treatment of employees of Lippert. You are currently renting space from Lippert, is that correct?
We rent, uh, a portion of Lippert's warehouse.
Do you have any other business affiliations or connections to that company?
None at all.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public, thank you. Anyone wishing, uh, from the public to speak in favor of 1853, please come to the podium. Please state your name and address.
Senator Brown, 222 East LeBar, from the city of South Bend. Um, I think this is a great idea, by keeping it in the city of South Bend. My only question is, uh, we take the president's toys with the company. Uh, are we having expansion of new employees anytime soon once we get out to the new, uh, place of residency? That's the only question I have. Other than that, I'm all in.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of 1853, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1853, please come to the podium. Uh, Mr. Buckenhauer, would you please just respond to the question?
Sure. Troy, go, respond to the podium question. And the question was regarding.
Are you adding any other?
Yeah, we're tentative. Versus new employees. Yeah, absolutely. So, much like the development cost, we take a very, we don't want to overpromise and underdeliver, frankly. So we have 108 employees today. We're moving into a much larger facility than we currently are in today. We fully expect that there could be some opportunities for job growth, uh, but, uh, today we know that we're going to need the 108 bodies. So I would not want to come here, appear in person, um, throw out a number that may not be achievable. So we, we like to, to stay pretty conservative with our estimates.
Thank you. With that, we'll turn it back to.
I was just going to address, uh, Councilman Davis, even if it was a little facetious, I know you, um, were talking about them leaving your district, but, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Troy, I, I believe that part of the reason they're, uh, another piece of the reason they're leaving is because of expansion of Lippert and a request by Lippert to specializing that space.
I heard that, plus, this, are you building a building out there?
Yeah.
So, so this is, you're not going to have to, um, uh, this makes you more permanent here anyway.
It's the controller on destiny, absolutely.
I understand.
This is capital investment that we make.
Yeah, my blessings.
Company owns.
Private company.
Company operates.
All right. But thank you for, um, even adding the fact that Lippert's moving on and do that. Even, uh, thank you. I appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second. Ms. Fowler, roll call, please.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Burley?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesco?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine, nine.
One, one more thing. I just wanted to thank, um, uh, no. Buckemire, thank you. Thank you, uh, I, I'm sorry, but thank you for, um, um, putting the stats about when we will breakeven. I appreciate you doing that because that really helps us in our whole argument regarding abatements, and, um, people like to see that, and, uh, I'm glad that you added that. If you can continue to do that, it helps us in our whole argument. So thank you, sir.
With that, resolutions are closed. I, uh, entertain a motion to join the committee of the whole.
Hold on. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Yeah. Want to take your name?
The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the full council meets with the committee. During each ordinance, members of the public will have an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition. Your comments will be limited to five minutes per bill.
With that, would the city clerk please read 3618?
3618, public hearing line ordinance, amended zoning ordinance for property located at 1939 and 1947 Charles Street, Councilman District Number Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, the zoning authorization committee met this afternoon, and we bring this report back to you as a unanimous favorable report.
Thank you. Uh, Jordan Wyatt with Area Plan Commission, offices on the 11th floor of this building. Uh, the petitioner is requesting his own change for the area outline in red, uh, from SF1 Single Family and Two Family District to LB Local Business District. To the north are vacant parcels currently used for drainage on LB Local Business District. To the west are businesses, GB General Business District. Uh, to the east are offices, LB Local Business District. Uh, to the south across Charles Street are single-family homes, SF1 Single Family and Two Family District. Here's a view of the site. The house to the west, uh, with the red roof, is currently vacant and used for storage. This is the view to the east, um, sorry, to the west. Uh, the white house, uh, is vacant now, but, um, the petitioner is keeping this portion of the parcels in Single Family, um, and Two Family District for the potential to rent it out. Uh, the site plan shows the expansion of the parking lot, um, and, like I said, the south, 120 feet of the east, uh, the eastern two blocks will remain SF1 Single Family and Two Family District. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the petitioner is here as well.
All right, we'll hear from the petitioner. Please state your name and address.
Thank you. I'm Brian Winen, um, 1820 South Bend Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. I own the businesses, Wisco and Spring Wyze, housed within the building, that since we moved there 30 years ago, have grown exponentially, and so the need for additional, uh, parking for employees has come, uh, not once, but I think this is probably the third time we've grown that parking lot in order to continue our business to grow here in South Bend. And so we've, we've kept the front as residential as we could, uh, and as you can tell by some of the photographs, uh, you want to be able to see the parking lot that we're proposing now in the back, uh, which is why we did the split zoning, and so we hope that this will come to the board's approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions for presenter or petitioner?
Yes, I was just told, and we talked about this in area plan, um, that you took the time to talk to the neighbors?
Yes.
Can you answer? Can you share us that experience and, um, and what was that like?
Um, not many of the neighbors that we, we talked to, and I apologize for not knowing all their names.
I understand.
A few across the street, and showed them, you know, the fencing that, that we could put up, um, and talked to them about leaving the home in place.
Yeah, and they were?
Uh, they, they had no, and nothing really to say, that they were just fine with it.
Okay. Thank you for going ahead and taking that, um, approach to meet with them. I appreciate it, like I said a minute before, I do it again.
Okay.
Seeing no other questions, we move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed.
I'd, I'd like to make a comment before I make a motion.
Sure.
Grant, could you put up the first slide again?
Uh, as lo, yeah, as long as Public Works is here now, um, the people who live in this apartment complex and maybe others, the residences, residents who live down there, walk the street quite a bit, Rosemary, and, uh, this gets very overgrown, as you can really just about see right now, and they're kind of in jeopardy, so if somebody from Public Works could look at our right of way and see if we could at least cut that back so they don't have to walk so much in the street, and maybe even consider, uh, improvements down the road. That's all. Thanks.
All right, Jay, uh, I'll make a motion to some of the favorable, full council.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Uh, city clerk, would you please read 3718?
3718, public hearing line ordinance initiated by the Area Plan Commission of St. Joseph County, Indiana, amending Chapter 21 of South Bend, amending proposed Articles 14, subdivisions to relieve certain lot standards that duplicate lot standards in the zoning ordinance, and delete floodplain definitions that have been updated in the zoning ordinance. Motion to hear the substitute version?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Mr. Chair, um, the zoning authorization committee met again this afternoon. We bring this to you as a favorable, um, report. I do want to recognize that there was one opposition in the, um, um, vote, so it was stated from that standpoint, but the overall vote was still, um, favorable vote. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
Good evening. Angela Smith from the Area Plan Commission with offices located on the 11th floor of this building. Uh, Mr. DeVita will be able to speak a little bit more about the content of the, uh, the proposed ordinance. What this is, is a joint effort between the Department of Community Investment and the Area Plan Commission to update the subdivision ordinance to eliminate some conflicts between the various ordinances we have within the city. I wanted to report to you that this comes to you from the Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation, and I'll let Mr. DeVita explain around that ordinance.
Good evening, Michael DeVita, planner with the Department of Community Investment, offices on the 14th floor of this building. As, uh, Ms. Smith mentioned, uh, four-year tax amendments revising the subdivision ordinance to eliminate redundant standards and to clean up language, making this ordinance easier to use. So the language in the present subdivision ordinance was created in 1982. Since then, changes elsewhere in the zoning ordinance or in other city standards have been made that renders provisions redundant or, in some cases, even in conflict with those standards. So specifically, lot size standards have added to the zoning ordinance that took effect in 2004, so the lot sizes given in the subdivision ordinance can no longer apply. The city's floodplain regulations were revised in 2015. The updated floodplain definitions, uh, now reside there and are no longer necessary within the subdivision ordinance. Then the Board of Public Works adopted new best practice construction, uh, standard and specifications this year that governs street and alley width and construction standards. Thus, those standards can be removed from the subdivision ordinance except by reference. So again, these changes are largely technical cleanups to ensure that the standards reside in a single, most logical spot within the, uh, city regulations. This avoids any confusion for developers or, uh, administrators. I ask for your approval, but can take any questions I might have.
Thank you. Any questions for presenter or petitioner? Seeing none at this time, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Back to the council, with your pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion to send for it favorably. All those in favor? Say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Uh, city clerk, would you please read?
Councilmember Furley, before we move to the, uh, reading of Bill 38-18, could you share with the audience, um, as it stands now, Bill, substitute Bill 38-1839? with the audience, as it stands now, Bill, substitute Bill thirty-eight, eighteen thirty-nine, eighteen and forty eighteen, what the process would be for these three bills?
Sure, today will be the second reading and public hearing, this will be the last opportunity for the public to comment on these bills in particular, we will continue these bills in the council portion only, there will be discussion among council at the next full council meeting, however, there will be no public comment, so this is the opportunity to speak on these bills from the public perspective, but also leading into the next couple of weeks, certainly if members of the public have additional comments, you're always welcome to reach out to any or all council members.
Okay, I would like to also, if it needs to, yes?
Um, Councilman Furley just said, to reach out to all council members, what would be the suggested way to reach out to the council members in between now and the time that we vote on the budget, what would be the best way to do that?
Through your telephone or through email.
Email or telephone. Okay, email, telephone, just, just wanted to put that on the record, that you can reach out to us from that standpoint, and then call your councilperson, email, for the mayor from this, I'm sorry, thank you.
I would like to also, if it needs the pleasure of the council members, if we could have our city controller, Jennifer, to come to the podium, just go through the calendar in regards to the adoption of the budget, then I'm gonna ask some comments and then we can go right into our bills. It's just, in terms of the steps that we would need to hear to as we move towards adoption from this time forward.
Do you mean the, the open questions and things like that?
Yes.
Sure, Jennifer Hockenhall, City Controller, offices on the twelfth floor of this building, we do have outstanding questions that I do hope to get you responses to tonight, and then we have, we will have responded to all the questions that have been formally presented to us by council so far, I think that there's probably one more round that we should be getting, but we will get all of those answers to you timely and well before the October eighth passage of the budget. We will continue to respond to any questions you have by email, phone, stop in and see us, anything like that, but we do hope that we pass the budget on October eighth, the latest that we can pass it is the, is November first is the latest that we can pass it, but October eighth could be ideal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just like to add too, that we started this budget process on May the twenty-second, that was a public meeting that was held at IBTAC, followed by on June, July, I'm sorry, the twelfth, we've met with the NRC Leadership Administration Team, and from starting, probably the first budget hearing that we had was on August the first, and we, including today's meeting, we would have had eleven budget hearings, each one of those hearings, we've had public input, and, you know, again, I think the council and, the council will still have ample opportunity for debate, discussion, as we move forward, so I just wanted that to be in the record so that the public would understand what the process is as it stands today.
Thank you. With that, city clerk, please read thirty-eight eighteen?
Thirty-eight eighteen, public hearing on an ordinance of the city of South Bend, Indiana, levying taxes and fixing the rate of taxation for purpose of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the civil city of South Bend for the fiscal year ending in December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
Could I entertain a motion to accept the substitute?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Is there a committee report, please?
Yes, the Personnel and Finance held a committee meeting, public hearing on substitute Bill thirty-eight dash eighteen, and we send this bill to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, presenter, please?
Good evening, Jennifer Hockenhall, City Controller, offices on the twelfth floor of this building, the ordinance before you is an ordinance requesting the various rates for the various funds that collect property tax revenue, we calculate these rates based on information that we input into our gateway system through the state, just, the rates are very similar to two thousand and seventeen, they've neither gone way up or way down, they're very similar to last year, and also I wanted to be sure to note that these do not affect the property tax caps, either just how the, the revenues throughout the county will be distributed to the city.
Thank you, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion, anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed, back to the council.
Make a motion to send this back to committee of the whole for council portion only discussion and third reading on ten eight. Second.
Is there also, is there also a recommendation, do you send it favorably?
Favorably, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read thirty-nine eighteen?
Thirty-nine eighteen, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating money for the purpose of defraying the expenses of several departments of the civil city of South Bend, Indiana, for fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand and nineteen, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, including all outstanding claims and obligations and fixing at time when this thing shall take effect.
Thank you, is there a committee report?
Yes, the Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting and public hearing on Bill thirty-nine dash eighteen, and send this bill to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, there a presenter, please?
Good evening, Mayor Pete Bojett with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building, look forward in a moment to turning it over to the city controller to walk you through the final budget presentation, but I wanted to take just a quick opportunity to introduce it, and just before that, because of some late-breaking news, I want to acknowledge and update the council that we did have, as you may have heard, an officer involved shooting this afternoon on Marion Street, we understand that the person who was shot, the suspect, was taken to a hospital with non-life-threatening injuries, officers have been looked at, but to the best of my knowledge have not been injured, and as with all officer-involved shootings, that is customarily investigated by the Metro Homicide Unit, so any further updates will come from them, but as they update me, if there are any questions or concerns from the council, be sure to keep your apprised, so I'm sorry for that to become part of what's on our minds this evening, but just to show you that it was a concern, I thought I'd go ahead and acknowledge that at the beginning. So, turning from that to the matter at hand, first of all, just wanted to thank the common council, Chairperson White, President Scott, every member of the council who's been involved in this process, as was mentioned earlier, there's been a very thorough calendar, and I think it's fair to say that each year we've been able to make the process more fine-tuned than the last, but this year in particular, really appreciate how members of the council have worked with the administration, I want to thank our city controller, Jen Hockenhall, for her leadership within the administration on this. Our focus, as we suggested when we introduced the budget formally some weeks ago, is really to respond to the council's call for us to have a budget that focuses on neighborhoods. We've had a number of different priorities, as always, jostling for attention, but everything, hopefully that you see in some way, shape or form is part of our shared mission and program to enhance the quality of life in neighborhoods around the city, and again, Jen will aidly go through some of the highlights of how we believe the budget does that. So, without further ado, I'll pass it over to Herb, again, I want to thank our team, everybody in the administration who works on, worked on this, and also everybody with the council who's helped us bring it to this point, and this is obviously the introduction, not the end of this dialogue or vote, but this is the best moment I have to express my hope that this budget will be looked on favorably by the council, thank you.
Good evening, council, Jen Hockenhall, City Controller, offices on the twelfth floor of this building. Alright, first I'd like to start by thanking everyone here for all of your time that you've put into this incredibly long process, but it's been a great process, so, we couldn't have gotten here without you and without your input and without the departments and without the residents, so thanks to everyone who's in this room tonight and those who are not, I really feel like this has been a great process and I appreciate everyone's support. So where have we been, as the mayor's pointed out and as Chairperson White has pointed out, we started this budget process back in May with our resident input session, we have a budget kickoff meeting for which many of the council members come to and they let us, they let us talk about kind of where we see the budget, but better yet, and the best part of the meeting I think is when the council members tell us what they think, getting that information in May is so helpful to us as we craft the budget. We've participated in ten committee hearings, and we've heard from the residents and the council and the department heads, and we've gone ahead and listed them out here, just in case anybody's forgotten kind of when they've been and what we've discussed, and then tonight, we're just here to give a very high-level summary, I don't want to go through in depth and everything that we've gone through for the last six weeks, but obviously our doors are open, so please come to us and talk to us if you have any further questions or if you feel like you missed the boat and haven't, you know, given you the information that you need for October eighth. Our main budget focuses have been for two thousand and nineteen, vibrant neighborhoods, resident engagement, public safety, health and human service and education, capital investments throughout all the departments in the city, quality of place, business development, and the support of our city workforce and departmental effectiveness. I've listed here the council budget goals as they presented, as your group has presented it to us back in May, and we feel that we have in some way, shape or form addressed everything on this list and we hope that you agree, I will not read them, but they have been addressed, and these were the resident budget goals that we heard in our various meetings from the beginning, and again, we feel that all of these items are also addressed in some way in the two thousand and nineteen budget. And our budget priorities as an administration have remained the same for the last few years on an, as an overall basis, not only with the neighborhoods, but also with the safe community for everyone, our strong inclusive economy and so forth. And these have been the slides that have been most of our presentations, so that's why I'm not reading through them. So I decided to do the presentation a little differently this year, I'm just going to go ahead and highlight what I see kind of, I couldn't pick just ten, so I went with eleven, I hope that you agree with me and they are not in any particular order, but why should you vote for this budget, why do we feel that this is a great budget for the residents, for the council, thank you, Councilman Davis, I do feel that this, this does kind of, it hits everything, I think, but again, if I've missed it, let us know. So why should you vote for this budget, first of all, park improvements, right, there might be a new park in your neighborhood even next year, we do have that budgeted, free Wi-Fi in many areas of the city, lots of neighborhood engagement with a heavy, will be a heavy focus in two thousand and nineteen, both with outside partners as well as with new city staff. Council is receiving a larger allocation of curb and sidewalk dollars with the approval of the additional side curb and sidewalk personnel and Public Works. There is significant funding for lot abatement-related initiatives, this budget will allow for continued capital investment in water, wastewater, EMS, fire, all departments that are in need of capital needs, we are continuing to approve those capital budgets, we are not currently putting off capital just to save money or to pick it down, pick it down the lane a little bit, we are continuing to fully fund our capital needs as of right now. Our residents will have access to a lifelong learning platform, and we're doubling our, our budget for the owner-occupied home repair programs that will offer, they will assist the residents as well as the neighborhoods, it's not just a one-house focus, right, it's a neighborhood focus. We continue to address the most vulnerable in our city from the permanent supportive housing initiatives, opioid addiction services and workforce transportation programs, there's also workforce development programs included in there as well. We continue to take care of our employees, we need to take care of, take care of our employees in order for us to continue to serve the residents of South Bend, so we're doing that through base of, or the raises that were either in the bargaining agreements or the two percent raise throughout the city for non-bargaining, our health and wellness clinic, transport bus passes and other benefits, which allows us to make our city a great employer for great employees. And the eleventh one is, we're allowing improvements in our neighborhoods by providing for a housing program, pilot program Sherman and Harrison, Portage and Elway Street Skates and Western Avenue Phase Three, just to name a few. So I hope that within these top eleven that we've picked, we've covered a lot of what you're asking for, but if you want me to come back on the eighth with another list, please let me know.
We got a couple more.
Okay, alright, I'm happy to review that again on the eighth. So where does our revenue come from, or what is our revenue budget for two thousand and nineteen? As you can see, our total revenues are about three hundred and thirty-six million dollars, about thirty percent come from charges for services, so that's going to be our water, wastewater, EMS fees, about a quarter of it come from property taxes, and I just want to point out that we are budgeting very conservatively for property taxes, I've mentioned it before in our meetings, but the state is very conservative when they give us their estimate, we have paid for a survey or a, for a report to be done to estimate what our property taxes are going to be, they're pretty different, so we're trying to err on the side of being very conservative, so we are budgeting on that conservative level, hopefully next year we're in front of you and we say, hey, we've got a great surplus, so you know, we did get all of the property taxes that were estimated by the third party, not by the state, but for the budget, budgeting purposes, we want to make sure that we're not overspending and undergetting our revenue. And we did also get good, or good news back on our local income taxes as well, where they're going up about ten percent for two thousand and nineteen, so the very positive news this year. So now we have our expenditures, we're gonna, we're budgeting to spend about three hundred and sixty-eight million dollars, as in the previous slide, as you can see, thirty percent of our expenditures are in the enterprise fund, so that, that does line up, our special revenue funds, those are going to include your parks, expenditures, anything related to streets, curb, sidewalks, that all falls under special revenue, our general fund is about eighteen percent of our expenditures, then we have our internal service funds and so on, so that is our estimated budget for two thousand and nineteen, oh, and I did not point out, but all of this detail is available online, as far as, from the line item, if you really want to get into that line item budget, that's all out there, as well as summaries that we've done a couple different ways that we haven't done on the past, so hopefully those will help, help you line these up if you have any more questions. And then we also wanted to show, how are we spending it by our, our priorities, so we are spending about a third of it, or, I'm sorry, a quarter of it, on safe communities for everyone, another quarter of it on robust and well-planned infrastructure, and without one, you can't have the other, so really, we're trying to keep our neighborhoods safe, we're trying to keep our cities safe by spending money appropriately. We've talked a lot about cash reserves over the last six weeks, what does it mean to have cash reserves, why are we spending it, why aren't we spending it, I just wanted to throw a really quick slide up here to briefly talk about it, cash reserves are cash available to meet the needs of the city operations, especially unanticipated needs, so the city has a cash reserve policy for every single fund, and every year in January, we come before the council, we give you a report that has our cash reserves policy, it shows you our investment policy, all that information is bundled together, but every single fund has its own cash reserve limit. So as you can see, our target for the general fund is thirty-five percent, we always want to make sure that we have at least thirty-five percent of our annual expenditures in our account. At the end of two thousand and nineteen, after this budget, we anticipate to have about a fifty-six percent cash reserve level, and as far as COAT and EDIT go, we're gonna be about sixty-four and a hundred and three percent respectively, where our target is only fifty-six, or only fifty percent. So while, yes, we are spending down overall cash reserves, if you look at the entire bucket of money that we have, the entire expenditures we have, but we really need to focus on these general plus funds, so it's COAT, EDIT, general fund and public safety, LOAT, we're presenting you with a balanced budget, so we are having no spend down in our reserves in any of those four funds, and we're gonna continue to have very strong reserves in those funds at the end of two thousand and nineteen and going forward, as you'll see in a couple more slides. So really just wanted to hit that home, hoping that that's making a little more sense as we go through this process, and also keep in mind that we also have a rainy day fund, that is our true savings fund, we don't touch it, I believe the last time we touched it was back in two thousand and eight, and that was, money was taken out, but put right back in on the same year, so that was the last time it was touched, and we have about ten and a half million dollars in that fund, so we do have a true rainy day fund to touch if we need it. We've talked a lot about people, and people make up a lot of our expenditures, but they also do all the work in the city, so we are anticipating, we're budgeting about one thousand one hundred and forty-five employees for two thousand and nineteen, up about eleven from two thousand and eighteen, and we discussed this in great deal on September nineteenth. Here's our headcount summary, as you can see, about two-thirds of our workforce are actually under bargaining, under bargaining agreements, we've got the police, the fire and the teen street unions, which cover quite a big deal of that pie, so when we talk about the salary ordinance, that will also come before you on October eighth, we're only talking about a third of our employees that fall within that salary ordinance, so just, just as a We work really hard on our budget document annually, our budget process with the help of you, so I always like to point out that we do get the distinguished budget presentation award from GFAL, I think we've gotten it three years in a row, it's got a lot of, a lot of information in it, if anyone here, any of your residents have any questions about it, we've got additional hard copies in our office, we're happy to pass out to anyone who wants them, so just throwing that out there. We received some good news on our fiscal curve, we had the analysis reworked with the increase in the property taxes that we've gotten recently, and we're down to about a one point nine four million dollar fiscal curve, so that's down just under five hundred thousand dollars from where we thought it was going to be earlier this year, so that's, again, we're bringing, we're bringing good news here tonight. So we feel that we have kind of figured out how to meet that one point nine four million dollar hole that we might see in two thousand and that we might see in 2020, based on moving some projects ahead in 2019 and 2018. We've got some big housing projects that we've talked about that will, you know, are focused in 2018 and will go away in 2019, along with some other items that we'll talk about here in a moment. So $1.94 million. We feel that we can handle this, we will get through this, and we will be able to bring you a balanced budget in 2020. So here's our fiscal outlook. We feel that if we continue with business as usual, you know, everyone gets the, gets their raises as approved, and the health insurance goes up about 4%, just the normal, everyday things that happen, the inflation. We feel that if we don't do anything different between today and 2020, we'll have about a $3.3 million deficit in our general plus funds in 2020. However, that's not simply due to this fiscal curve that we now think that we have solved. A lot of this has to do with Medicaid reimbursement levels at the federal level. So we're having some capital challenges in EMS and fire and that kind of thing. We used to use that money to, to fill those needs, so we'll be working on fixing that. We lost some gas tax receipts that we weren't expecting at the state level, so we're working through that. And then also the Riverboat Gaming revenue that we used to get that we won't be getting now. So we've got a couple of things that have happened, that were out of our control, that we will continue to work through and that we will, you know, be sort of bringing a balanced budget up next year. But that's, that's what we're looking at. So to get ahead of these new challenges that are occurring, that are, that are out of our control, but we will work through, as we spoke about back in August, we're going to look, continue to look at ongoing organizational refinement. Can we civilianize positions in police and fire? Those, those kind of things that have been talked about over the last few weeks. The hiring freeze, so not saying that we won't hire anyone ever again come January 2019, but we'll just take a really deep look into all the positions as they become vacant. Identifying public-private partnerships if possible. We are investigating additional funding sources such as ramps and opportunity zones, and also looking internally at the budget as a two-year budget. So with, you know, big cap, big projects done in one year, so. So our concluding thoughts is, you know, we've got about a $368 million budget. Again, I'd like to point out, we've got a balanced budget. We are giving you a balanced budget in your general plus funds. We're continuing to move towards the long-term balance while relying on some, you know, modest reserves and also modest increases in revenues. And we continue to maintain our city's growth through continued investments in our neighborhoods, our people, and technology, and measuring our performance for continuous improvement. So with that, I open it up to you.
All right. Any questions from council members at this time? And we'll do comments after the public portion. Seeing no questions, move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor?
Samuel Brown, 222, South Bend. I'm a human rights officer for the city of South Bend. And we're moving onto the county, and we're very excited about that. But the problem we have is, we wanted an extra person in case we get a workload in the county. But the problem we face when we do budget, I would like for them to try to look it over and seek him. We usually want a person, and we wanted another, because like I said before, we're moving into the county. We want to try and do our job and make a good showing. I would like for the mayor and the mayor's young lady that take the budget. We try to find us, I know my new site, understand that. But I would like for them to try to get us at least one person who we really need to. And I'm praying that we can get that. It would mean a lot because right now, by moving onto the county, I'm trying to serve the county. But without those two people, we'll be dragging a stick. We don't really be fighting hard to serve, let me share. And I want to be the guy who are lacking manpower. So I'm praying that we should try to find this money. Thank you for listening, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening. Sue Castle, 422 Kennedy Drive. The finance administration did a lovely job on the actual presentation. I can see why they got an award, and they made it used to use, and the citizens, we appreciate that. The point I'd like to address is one that's come up repeatedly, is that there's 80 lane miles of roads that are Level 4 or worse. According to Eric Corvath, that would take about $8 million to bring them up. I think people are tired of having their front ends go out, potholes. They feel like the, you know, the city's, one of the core things of the city, we talked about core competency, is keeping those roads passable and in decent condition. So I don't know where you are in terms of rearranging money, but I think there needs to be $8 million to address those roads. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, the public portion is closed?
Make the motion.
Actually, sorry. We had some, we had some comments, and also we had an opportunity for rebuttal. That's okay. We'll do rebuttal, and then we have some comments before we make. With that, with the controller, I'd like to make a rebuttal.
We appreciate the comments, and we'll be sure to look through and see if there's anything that we can do. $8 million for roads will be, be a stretch, but we will, we will look and come to the council, likely with information when we respond to the questions with additional information.
Could you, Chairperson, isn't there a position for human rights in this new?
There is a position. There is a part-time position for human rights, yes.
But needs to look at a little bit differently. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Now we have an opportunity for comments. We have John Boardy and the law chair, Mr. Frank.
Okay. I would like to start just by complimenting council leadership, especially Karen White, and the administration, especially the controller and her staff, and all under the mayor's direction, of course, from the city side, for being so open and responsive to council questions. You don't have to have been around very long to know it didn't always work this way, and it was far from being as open as it is now. Those of us who have been around can tell tales of back-room deals to get votes and things like that. It's good that that doesn't happen anymore. And anyway, it, and there was very, very little solicitation of public input. So now, thanks primarily to Karen and Tim, and, you know, working with the rest of the council members. If we don't have the information that we think we need, it's because we haven't asked. Because I don't know of anything that, that the administration has not responded to. We don't always agree on specific amounts, and I think there are still some things between now and October 8th to be agreed upon, or at least approached. And anyway, but I'm, I'm pretty confident that's going to happen based on what's happened already. So I would actually like to break precedent or protocol, whatever you call it, right now, and just applaud the administration for that. How about that? That's all.
I remember, right?
I wanted to follow up again with that question about human rights, because I was asked about it, and I still don't think I got clarification. Meaning, I know that there's a part-time position in there, but from my understanding, there was a, a position in there that was removed. And it's no longer in there, but it originally was. So I am trying to get clarification, only not with just part-time position, but was there a full-time position originally in the budget? I think at its inception, it was.
I think the last year, excuse me, the last year's budget, I think it was 2018 when we did the budget process. At that time, if I'm not mistaken, the Human Rights Commission presented a budget based on them eliminating one position. At that time, I clearly cautioned them not to do it. I just love, I can say, you know, I was right, but anyway. I regretted not doing that, not knowing what the impact of expanding into the county. And I, if I'm not mistaken, this budget, they're coming back and asking for a part-time position in response to the impact of expanding services into the county. But that was eliminated last year, based on the recommendation of the leadership, I think. Okay?
I believe we have a comment or question for them.
Yeah, both. Again, I'd like to also thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate you following up and suggesting, because I think it's important to put the numbers into terms that, not only from a financial point of view, but also to help us to argue our case for, against the budget in terms of sharing. When we go to our neighborhood meetings and meet with people in the store or whatever, what are the reasons why I chose to vote for, or even vote against? But in your case, of course, and tonight, voting for the budget. And that's cool, because a lot of times we get caught up in the different numbers, and not everybody's able to see that. And when people can say, well, this is what's important for the District 6, or whatever district anybody out here is representing. And so I appreciate, I forwarded the recommendations that you sent to me, or to the council, so they can share what you see as ideas that were important. You thought for the 6th district area. And I think that's important, because people need to say, why did you vote for that budget? And I can say, well, reason 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, or whatever. And, and I think people need to see that, and to break that down, because I've been asked that. And so the more we can put that in terms, it's important. Tonight, you were there. I did share some concerns that I had with the zoning issues. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that, and I'll share some notes about that. And not against, I still like the idea and the concept, but how we put that together, and when we put that together, how we do that, there's some things that I'd like to, after I finish talking to a few more people and to our attorney, I'll be sharing that again with you all, regarding that matter. Any other considerations that we could have regarding the neighborhood dining houses group, neighborhood resources group? I would like for us to at least consider that again, as we really push this whole concept about neighborhoods. I think we have enough in our budget to continue to do what the administration wants to do, and also to look at adding issues there too. Whatever disagreements that, I know that some things, way they wanted to do certain things last year, and way they want to do some things this year, I understand that. But I think that, I believe that we can still do both and have enough funds where we can do that. And I think that helps us to build goodwill toward that issue and not have, at this time in our administration, and this time in our, to have that friction. I think this is, we want to get neighborhoods involved in a lot of ways, not only through the Department of City, Community Investment, but also through organizations like that. And I think that between now and October the 8th, if some monies can be reconsidered to be put back, if it's not even the full amount, something toward that to show that people have had some insight and some kind of consideration. If you want to make some more stipulations with what they need to do in order to get that, and they have to follow that, else this is going to be cut for next time, more so. I'm all for that too. But I, I just think that we can honor, they have had a good service to our community and to look at issues like that. So those are some of the things that I would like for us to look at. I appreciate all the sidewalk issues and more issues coming from that. I am done. I'll share more things in a letter and all that, but yeah, I know, y'all looking at me like I'm from too. Oh! Okay. Okay, that's just where I am, okay?
No, it's all great.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you. All right.
First, John, thank you. I applaud you and your team for the work that you put into this. This is my first rodeo, so, you know, putting, that's right. Putting, putting all this together, all the different funding sources, everything that's going in, coming out. It's, there's a lot, there's a lot to it. So thank you for all the work that you guys have done, and for keeping us abreast of everything. I would like to echo Ms. Cousins' sentiments on paving and roads and infrastructure. So we did this, you know, we commissioned this, this city survey. And unsurprisingly, when it came back, you know, roads and infrastructure and public safety, I talked to priorities of our citizens. And in terms of our budget, I think at the current rate that we're paving, we're responsible for something like 2,200 lane miles. Mr. Horlov can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think at the current rate that we're doing that, I don't think that's sustainable. I mean, we, we are blessed to live in a 152-year-old city, because it's got rich history, but it's also got very, it's got infrastructure that's aging. So I'd like to see us address it. And I know it maybe can't all be done this, this year. But I'd like to continue that dialogue and how we can further address our roads and some of our other infrastructure issues moving forward. Thank you.
No requests?
Just would like to thank you all again. It's really been a great process. And Councilwoman White, thank you for, even over the years that I've been here, expanding the connection with the community, really getting out there and getting that feedback. I think it says a lot. Jen, when you had there, the very first thing we did was get input from residents. So that's fantastic. Just a really quick thing on the NRC. Been talking to them about some really important programming. So I'd like, I don't know who would be the person to talk to, maybe folks in community investment. But would like to talk to you about some programming with regards to restored practices that would possibly get into this issue of proactive strategies to reduce violence in our community. There's a lot of work happening in schools and various community organizations. Maybe there's somewhere, and NRC is interested in being a part of that, so maybe there's somewhere in there we can see the value of, of providing some resources in that programming. For InReach, my guy in the back there, it's my favorite word. So maybe we can have a conversation, but I do, I would like to see that. As Councilman Davis pointed out, you know, let's try it again for another year and make sure that we're hitting the goals that, that you set out and we are looking for. And make sure that we're figuring out ways to be sustainable. Because I agree that, you know, the city shouldn't be supporting a nonprofit ongoing with however many percent of their budget. But what can we do to make sure that we're ready for that in the coming year? So that's it, thank you.
Councilwoman White?
I just have a couple of comments, one of which, you know, most of you know that I really enjoy the budget process. And since I'm the chair of the coming, of this committee, I would like to thank the council members for your input, for your support as we are moving towards adopting the 2019 budget. Would like to personally also, on behalf of the council, thank the city clerk's office and her staff. They've done a tremendous job in terms of, in terms of ensuring that the questions, all of the PowerPoints are on the website, and responding to nine council members. And each one of us were asking for different information at different times. So really appreciate all of your work and your staff as well. I can't recall, probably maybe six years ago, we started talking about the quality of life issues and really focusing on our neighborhoods. I've always have made the statement that a city cannot be great without having great neighborhoods. And as we continue to refine the process, as we continue to look at the various priorities, it is very gratifying to see those particular funding priorities that really impact the neighborhoods. And I really appreciate the administration listening and bringing forth those particular priorities that not only we've been sharing, but we heard from our citizens as well. So I look forward to the next two weeks and look forward to October the 8th.
One other question. I know we had a, it wasn't a budget meeting, but we, well, we did have a budget meeting, but we also had a special meeting regarding the people in the Lipo Park area and all of the flooding. And I wanted to make sure that we have had enough in the budget to cover the issues that they came to us that night. We had a joint meeting that you all chaired. And I know there was some talk about we did not have enough to cover some things and that, but I want us to make sure, I mean, even given the rain we had last Thursday, it was amazing. And I think about them and the people in Chippewa, I was getting phone calls. And so when we have this heavy rain now, it seems like it's coming more and more. Just want to make sure that... want to make sure that we have more funding in that area to cover situations like this because it's becoming more the biyearly kind of flood instead of the 500-year flood from the standpoint. So, if we can really make sure that we have that, that's a huge concern of mine. And since Transpo is about to make their things, I'm glad that they, again, worked with their budget and I'm glad for that and the fact that no fee raises on our budget, so thank you.
With that, is there a motion from council?
I would like to make a motion, send this favorably to the whole council and send it to the Committee of the Whole for 1018, for council portion only.
Second.
Oh, 1018, I'm sorry.
Second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City Clerk, would you please read 4018?
4018. Public hearing on ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating monies for the purposes of defraying expenses of designated enterprise funds for the city of South Bend, Indiana for fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2019 and ending December 31st, 2019, including all outstanding claims and obligations in future and time when the same shall take a match.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Personnel Finance Committee, excuse me, held a committee meeting and public hearing on this bill and sent it to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
Jennifer Hockenhall, City Controller, office is on the 12th floor of this building. Because we present our budget to you as a whole package with civil, city, and enterprise funds, I do not have a presentation for this as it was all presented in the last.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, back to the council, what's your pleasure?
Make motion, send this favorably to the council for Committee of the Whole and in council portion only for 1018.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Good night. Would the City Clerk please read 4118?
4118. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating, adopting, and improving the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation's budget for 2019 and levying the tax and fixing the rate of taxation for purposes of raising revenues from the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation of South Bend, Indiana for the fiscal year ending in December 31st, 2019.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Personnel Finance Committee held a committee meeting and public hearing on Bill 41818. We sent this to you with a favorable recommendation.
Is there a presenter, please? And I believe your clicker is with Graham.
Okay. Don't worry, we haven't memorized.
If it's the same, yeah, the same one from the committee.
Don't worry, we haven't memorized.
Yeah.
Okay.
If it's the same, yeah, the same one from the committee.
Same one. So, hit the highlights. Chris Kuzek, Control and Transport Office, at 1401 South, not yet, South Bend, Indiana. So, just give a brief, we'll just go with a brief presentation of it. Basically, we're Transpo South Bend, we serve South Bend and Mishawaka. We currently have 117, excuse me, 117 total employees. We operate 49 fixed route vehicles and additional 17 paratransit vehicles. During 2018, our accomplishments for the year-to-date are, we started new ridership programs with Holy Cross College and IU South Bend, which allows a school to pay for free rides for the students and the faculty to ride our service for free. We also had the record ridership for K-12 youth ridership. This year, we offered it for free as service, so the students, K-12, didn't pay any fee to ride our buses. We had a budget goal of 12,000 rides. We ended it with 27,571 rides for the summer. We also partnered with Baycott to continue, which launched the Yellow Line Corridor Route. And what that does is that allows 30-minute travel time from Mishawaka Transfer Facility to downtown Elkhart. And in addition, we just purchased new technology to improve our paratransit service, which will help us, number one, improve our scheduling and also help us improve our on-time reliability. In addition, we ordered our first round of bus shelters and we'll wait to see when we receive them, if we can get those installed before the end of the year. Our 2019 challenges that we expect to have is that we have 27 fixed route vehicles which are eligible for replacement. Per the FTA requirements, we have to keep them a minimum of 12 years before we can consider that being replaced. Those 27 vehicles are 14-plus years old, so that's a priority that we have because we replace our older vehicles, we cut down on maintenance costs with that, and we'll be changing those to CNG fuel instead of diesel fuel. There's always uncertainty in the federal and state funding that we receive. We're also looking at the 2020 Circuit Breaker, which is an estimated at $300,000 decrease in property tax funding we will receive. We also have annual increases in our insurance, not only health insurance, but our vehicle insurance and our liability insurance. And the last one, which is going to be, is very important, is we have our collective bargain, current collective bargain agreement expires in November of 2019. So, we'll be looking at going into the contract negotiations in the summer of 2019, and we'll have an update on that when we come into our budget season on what's that looking like. Of our revenue sources, 36% of our revenue comes from property tax and county option income tax. Another 19% comes from state funding, which is Public Mass Transit Fund, which is subject to the state changing it on a year, on a two-year cycle. We receive 28% of our budget revenue from federal operating and federal prevent maintenance, and then only 13% from our passenger revenue. From an expense standpoint, we receive, we spend about 75% of our budget on wages and benefits. In addition, another 6% on materials and supplies. So, we did balance our budget. Our total budget expenses is 10,617,606. When we look at our operating expenses compared to prior years, we're pretty flat, around $10.6 million the last three years. And we've done that through making changes in our expenses and making some other changes in how we calculate average rates and some minor little service stuff. Labor expense, again, it's been very consistent at around the $5.6 million range. Our biggest change, which is our health and, I believe that, that's not the right one, presentation. Okay. So, basically, what it is, is our thing is, we look at our health insurance, we have a slight increase in our health insurance, about 8% due to, we had a bad year in 2017, so we're making up part of that deficit in 18 and 19 to pay for a bad year we had in 2017. We are currently on the St. Joe County Health Plan. We started that in 2017. We switched to that program because back then, in 2016, we were expected to have a 15% to 20% increase. This year, we had then, we look at it with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, again, ANFO, and they were expecting another 15% to 20% increase. And we will know next month how, what our increase for 19 is, but we have a budget of And moving back to the property tax, going back, that's the other major we're revealing right now. We had a study done from Lumont Associates, and they anticipate a decrease in property taxes of about $300,000 due to the 2020 Circuit Breaker, gradually going up, not revenue-wise from '21 to '22. To put that in perspective, in 2022, we'll receive about 9.9, excuse me, $2.9 million in property tax revenue. That'll be the same amount we received in 2018. Some of the operating assistance that we do receive, it's been pretty flatlined from the state standpoint and also relatively flat from the federal side of things too. Some of our 2019 priorities are, we're trying to introduce new technologies into our system. First one is our paratransit schedule. We just purchased that, we're looking to get that totally up and running by January 1st. That'll help us improve our efficiency and also our scheduling on that end. Still continue with our ridership initiatives, which is looking at developing partnerships with other organizations besides universities, for example, the Prox Center, Workforce One, et cetera, type of programs. In addition, replacing our current fleet program. We will know more sometime this fall. We did complete a federal competitive grant to purchase buses, to get money to replace buses. We'll know later in the fall if we receive that amount. And also, which, that's a competitive grant that the FTA had us apply for. In addition, we'll be applying for the Indiana Volkswagen mitigation funds to help offset the 20% local match that we have to pay for the FTA requirements if we receive money for the federal grant funding. And that's it.
Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Are you seeing any questions? Sure.
In terms of fiscal oversight and board leadership adjustments that you've made in 2018, can somebody address some of those changes? Yeah. Sorry.
Jamie Woods, General Counsel of the Board of Directors at Transpo Maintenance and Law Office at 420 Lincoln Way West in Mishawaka, Indiana. So, we've, since January 1st, we've had a couple of new board members, had a new board president, Mr. Jatin Kane has assumed the leadership of Transpo as their board chair. He and I have met and the board has changed some of their administrative bylaws and policies, dealing with how information is presented to the board and the board's ability to receive more information in an efficient way, as well, the whole committee structure at Transpo as to how they've received information. Traditionally, has been aggregated and replaced to kind of, probably more akin to what you have here, where the entire board is receiving all the information, so they're all receiving information in advance of a meeting, so they're making those informed decisions. And as well, Mr. Tesca has come on the board, so there'll be more oversight and involvement here by folks at the South Bend County Council and work with Mr. Davis. So, it's really, there's been some significant changes, not to point, or say anything was bad with prior, board members at Transpo have represented Transpo over a decade and all the board, they've all been very efficient people, will have served at Transpo, and but for this one administrative issue that we had kind of discarded here, it's, they've really been a very, they provide a great benefit to the community of a very diverse workforce, so that I think that these changes that are in place now will be able to make sure that nothing like that happens again.
Would be great. Thank you. I appreciate you addressing that. And another question, you mentioned ridership agreements and looking at those with others. I think many of us heard today that perhaps, and it may be early information and maybe, but that South Bend Community School Corporation might be looking at widening their walk radius for students to walk to school versus, you know, hopping on a bus. And I guess I would like to know sort of what, is there an ongoing relationship relative to our schools and transportation of our students going to our public facilities? I guess I'd like to, is it on your radar? I guess I want to understand or no?
Yes, there has been discussions with the South Bend School Corporation. I work on the financing, so I'm not part of the ownership, but I know there has been ongoing conversations with them.
Okay.
And we could, I could have our acting CEO, general manager, get back with comments on that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I just think with those, with the new changes that they're talking about with the schools, it would be good for her to revisit that again. And I believe that the South Bend Community Corporation would do well to work with us even and intensify that effort because city of Mishawaka has something. Could you explain what we do for Mishawaka?
The way it works for Mishawaka is, is we, they're called school trippers. And what the school trippers are, is they offset the fixed route that goes by, for example, the John Young one. I don't know exactly, can't remember which route it is, but it's, we just add extra bus to that route during morning pickup and afternoon drop, uh, excuse me, morning to school and afternoon back home. So, it's just adding another fix, another bus along an existing fixed route system, and it's open to the public. So, everyone would pay the same fare and anyone can get on the bus, as long as that, as long as that bus is on that route.
And I could see us doing something similar here to add what we do to Mishawaka. And I just think that we can help, see one of my colleagues on the board, Jerika, but if we could look at that, I think that's going to really help us by adding what we do in Mishawaka to what we do here. That one extra bus really makes a huge difference in the morning routes and in the afternoon routes, and that's really a huge problem every day alone. This is going to be late, this is going to be late for all your parents. I think if we can add that extra bus, we can cut down on that. So, thank you.
I have just three quick comments, three smart things. There's some ridership, you obviously knocked that out of the park in terms of, you know, seeing it as a need and, you know, going full throttle on that, and it's, I'm actually very excited to hear that level of response from the community. And that, you know, kind of leads me into sort of that South Bend Community School Corporation, can we take this maybe perhaps a little bit further? And particularly with regard to, you know, some of the older students, middle school and up. Your paratransit changes that you've made in that program, very appreciative of that. And then, the Mishawaka, the Yellow Line in that frequency and availability of that and the ease of transfer from Mishawaka, getting people to Elkhart County and vice versa. I think that's a huge, I said it in committee, but I don't think we can advertise that improvement enough. So, thank you, at least from my perspective, on those two programs in particular.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor?
Sammy Brown, 222, East of York, City of South Bend. I have a watchdog group called City 9 for Better Government. Transpo, I'd like to know, have we done a complete audit from the last two years? How we stand on that? I had a problem with him, and I was worried about Transpo. And I'd like to know these answers because we all know that we want a good sound of bus system in the city of South Bend. From the information I got, the Dumball Homes, you know, my poor bus, in that area, we're serving all of the people in South Bend, I did wonderful things that they're doing to extension, and I'm grateful, it sounds good, but I got these concerns. The last two years was garbage, I'm not scared to say it, I'm just telling it like it is, but maybe they had a lot of words about the Dumball Homes project. People got to walk from West Washington down to West Bend. They got jobs out by Luke Morgan, I mean, the Luke Morgan's out there, trying to walk down that hill. It is really time walking back up to the hill. I went to the board bits, I went discussing with the whole thing, but I haven't given up. Just been, yeah, we got it cleaned up. And it sounded like when you get my idea, it has been cleaned up a lot. But I'm going to reach out to them to know that the citizens, especially me, I got information that was left to me by a real trustworthy person, some of the things as well. And I hope that I'm looking, dialing and getting straightened out. But the Dumball Homes, for the rerouted bus, for the new hardship on thirty people. I had moved the bus, and I know that first down, I cannot walk up the hill from Western Avenue to the Dumball Homes. So, I hope that we are, get the dial out going. So I hope that we are, get the dialogue going for it.
Jesse Davis, P.O., Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. Obviously, public transportation is very important to the community as a whole, not just South Bend. But while they're looking at the budgets and spending money to replace fleets and things, we've got a couple of public health and safety issues that are kind of going on over in Mishawaka. And I know there's council members that have seen it. It's been all over social media. Number one, I've never even run into that transfer center over there, but there are people that have to sit there and wait for sometimes extended period of times to get on the buses. I honestly don't know if there's restrooms there, or if there are restrooms there, are they out of order or something? Because there are two businesses, the gas station and the old Bonnie Dunes, which is now a small restaurant, who freak when we get people coming in and out wanting to use bathrooms. I happened to be in the restaurant one morning and a guy came from the Transpo off of one of the buses and came in and tried to pass a kind of a five dollar bill and get change for the bus. And when the lady marked the bill and said, hey, that's fake money, the guy hit the door, ran up onto a Transpo bus. I chased him to the bus. And so I know they have a problem, obviously, with restrooms. They have a sidewalk that I'm assuming is owned by Transpo that runs from the city walk back to the terminal. That sidewalk has been in such despair for well over a year. I shared a live video last week because an elderly woman with a walker couldn't even lift her walker up high enough to get above the heave on the sidewalk. Well, when I did the live video and I stepped on that big chunk of sidewalk, which is almost as big as this podium, that whole sidewalk teeters. You get your feet stuck under it, little kids could get their feet stuck under it. It's been that way for an over a year. It's been on social media, people have talked about it a lot. I mean, there's no way that Transpo doesn't know that that needs fixed. So if we're going to spend money on CNG buses, which is supposed to save us money in the long run, let's take some of those savings and let's take care of our maintenance issues so that things are safe, because otherwise it's, could be a big lawsuit.
Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one?
That was in favor? That was in favor.
Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, we have an opportunity for rebuttal from the presenter or petitioner?
They didn't need anybody, even though that was in favor, they didn't need anybody.
We certainly don't want any losses. I appreciate Mr. Davis pointing it out to the council and to Mr. Kubizak and myself. And we will make sure that Amy Gill, the interim general manager at South Bend Transpo is made aware of that. And I'm assuming there'll be some feedback back to you on that issue. And I know that Mr. Davis and Mr. Tesca would want that as well. As to Mr. Brown and the particular stop issue, I know there's been lots of conversations. Mr. Davis was involved in those, dealing with making sure the stops around the New Martins were favorable and accessible to the folks that would use those stops. And I think that those, if there's ongoing concerns, those should be addressed to Ms. Hill as well. So on those two particular items, I think that those are things that can be addressed operationally. As to just the general consensus, has there been an audit? Transpo is like every other governmental entity, they're subject to a state board of accounts audit. Transpo even hosted the audit for all the other municipal entities here in the county that come over to Transpo and the state board of accounts meets with them there. So we're audited, the budgets have been relatively flat, minus pointed by Mr. Kubizak. And Transpo has, you know, certainly had ongoing conversations with state board of accounts about any type of other issue that been ongoing since January 1st of 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. With the rebuttal portion closed, we are back to the council.
I move that this bill go to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 4218?
4218. And order for the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriate conditional funds for certain parliamentary and city service operations in 2018 of $672,857 from Economic Development Grant Fund 210, $1 million from the DCI Grant Fund 212, $5,000 from the Gift Donation Request Fund 217, $699,700 from Liability Insurance Premium Reserve Fund 226, minus $960,000 from the Lowet 2016 Special Distribution Fund 257, minus $337,632 from the Local Road and Bridge Grant Fund, number 255, $28,100 from the Economic Revenue Fund 281, and minus $55,000 from the Kowalski Stadium Capital 1401, minus $124,050 from the UDAG Fund, number 410, $28,100 from the Redevelopment General Fund 433, and $650 from the Smart Streets Debt Service Fund 756.
Thank you. Is there a committee report, please?
Yes, Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting and public hearing on Bill 42-18. We send this to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
Good evening, Council. John Hockenhall, City Controller, offices on the 12th floor of this building. As we discussed earlier in the meeting today, I'll just hit on the larger dollar items. The first one for the Economic Development State Grant Fund for $672,000 is for a newly awarded grant from the state. We are asking to appropriate those funds. For the DCI Grant Fund, there's a million dollar request and that is due to an increase in allocation from HUD as well as appropriating funds that we've received in prior years. The Liability Insurance Fund relates to two different items. One of them is for workers' comp claims, most of them which happened in 2017 that were very large claims that we're still paying for into 2018. We're hoping that this $500,000 request takes care of the expenses that we'll incur for the rest of the year. And then there's roughly $200,000 that we're requesting for catastrophic events, which all relate to the 2018 flood that we had that affected the city property. For those, we are actually receiving insurance reimbursements for those, which are going back in to replenish that fund. And then the other large items are reductions in budgets and most of those are cleanup items as we work on the 2019 budget, realize that some items, especially in the road funding area, needed to be reduced based on having to repay some state funds that we received because projects came in under budget and those kinds of things. Happy to answer.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council at this time?
So when projects, oh, it's okay. Projects coming out of the budget, then what happens?
It related to the safe routes to school. And if anyone in public works, if I'm butchering this, please stop me. But there were some safe routes to school projects and it happened in 2017 and we did the work in 2018, but the project came in under what we had thought we were going to get, but the state had given us money to begin with, so we had to reimburse the money back to them. It was a 50-50 match grant.
Okay. You can't utilize it in any other kind of similar kind of program?
Not for this one. Yeah, what was mentioned earlier was that it was a learning experience for all.
Okay. Come on, please.
With that, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Back to the council.
Make motion, send it to the full council, favorable.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 4318?
4318. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers from various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for year 2018.
Is there a committee report?
Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting and public hearing on this bill. We send it to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
Good evening. John Hockenhall, City Controller, offices on the 12th floor of this building. Before you is the third quarter budget transfer request. If we have needs for money in a different category, but it's not an additional request, it shows up on this form and they allow us to move money within three different categories that are set forth by the state, so personnel, services, and supplies. So we are moving, moving some funds between those different categories. The only large one on here for the third quarter relates to EMS capital. Unfortunately on here, it says Century Center Capital Fund, but the numbers are accurate at the 287. That is the Century Center Capital Fund. And that was really just related to moving money between services and capital.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Back to the council.
Make motion, send this to the full council, favorable.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 4418?
4418. Public hearing on an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $4,205,000 of the city of the city of South Bend, Indiana Economic Development Revenue Fund Series 2018, Potawatomi Zoo Project, and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Thank you. Is there a committee report, please?
Yes, Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting and public hearing on Bill 44-18. We send it to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
Evening, Council. Aaron Perry, Executive Director, Venues Parks and Arts, offices at 301 South St. Louis. We're very fortunate, as you're aware, to have the zoo as a part of the city of South Bend. The educational initiatives that happen there, the research, the conservation efforts that happen there are phenomenal. All aside, the economic impacts and the memories that are made there match those first categories are none. As you're well aware, we have a partnership in the Potawatomi Zoological Society. This has been a five-year partnership, it's just about coming to a close. So earlier this summer, the park board, as well as the Potawatomi Zoological Society Board, entered into some lines of negotiations. We passed unanimously at the Board of Park Commissioners Meeting, I think in June, a new 15-year agreement that recognizes the substantial amount of work that TCS has done at the zoo. I think we'd all agree that its impact has seldom looked better out there. As a part of that agreement, we went through and requested that the zoo did a deferred maintenance plan. And so I think that's been shared with the council to kind of look at some of the efforts that are really needed to keep that zoo functioning at a very high level. As well as some additional upgrades that's involved in their 30-year capital plan, including a marquee new entrance that'll allow the zoo to expand their educational efforts to become compliant in universal accessibility measures, as well as accommodate larger groups. I'll let Marcy discuss those, and I think you already heard them at a high level. Just the, one final note before we get into some of the brass tacks. This 15-year agreement that we put together really recognizes not only the length, the length of the agreement, recognizes the fine work they're doing, but the amount of money that we're going to put into the agreement over the term of 15 years reduces the taxpayer burden. So when the city was running the zoo, we were spending about $1.3 million a year on capital and operations. Throughout the past five years, we've been spending close to $900,000 a year on average. This new agreement, over the term of the 15 years, will take us down to about $810,000 annually. So that does reduce the taxpayer burden. The way we're able to do that is by reducing our operational subsidy in exchange for some upfront capital investments. And that's what we're talking about tonight. That's that not to exceed $4.2 million bond number. So I apologize that I wasn't here earlier in committee, I was stuck in a plane, I had to sleep in the airport last night.
Pretty loud, right?
So I'm pretty tired, so I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues to talk about this and certainly answer any additional questions you might have. Marcy Dean, the Executive Director of the Potawatomi Zoological Society, she'll cover the scope of the work. And then we have representatives from bond counsel to talk about the financing mechanism. Marcy?
Good evening, members of the council. I am Marcy Dean, Executive Director of Potawatomi Zoo, offices at 500 South Cremon. So just to echo what Aaron had talked about, these are the improvements that are associated with the $4.2 million bond that we're talking about tonight, without the financing, the bond amount being 3.7 million, so that's the number that I'm going to refer to as I go through our presentation. So of that 3.7 million, 2.2 million is going to be going for much-needed deferred maintenance that's necessary for us to obtain our Association of Zoos and Aquariums, or AZA, as I'll start to shorten it up, our AZA accreditation next year. So our inspection's in June of 2019. So as Aaron had mentioned, we did have a deferred maintenance audit conducted last August, August of 2017, with outside inspectors. And the audit, which was sent to everyone on council last week, lays out the total audit number, which is around 3.7 million, phased into urgency one, urgency two, and urgency three, in terms of the need of necessity to get our AZA accreditation. The 2.2 million is actually going to be addressing urgency one, which is the first urgent phase. And those are needs that are necessary to obtain our AZA accreditation, projects that need to either be completed before our June 2019 inspection or have a plan associated with it for our 2019 hearing, which will be at AZA in September. So to meet our AZA accreditation, the zoo will be completing deferred maintenance items such as, and these are just sort of the big picture, it was a 98-page document, and so I can't put 98 pages of information on one slide or we would be here all night, so I'm just going to go through sort of the high-level urgency one needs. Repaving guest pathways, so we have several areas within the zoo, guest pathway-wise, that are no longer safe for our guests, and so we've yellow lined them until we can get them repaved. New carnivore containment for leopard and lion, that meets current carnivore containment standards. So our current standard containment, which is the metal does rust and could potentially give us some containment issues, so we will be going to SS Oldhamesh. New roofs on several buildings, new HVAC and electrical systems, so we know several of our HVAC systems are up to date, as well as electrical panels. New safer patron fence throughout the zoo, new animal containment all throughout the outside of East Barn, so we have severe containment issues there with a very old barn. New fencing throughout Zoo Barn, repairs to several buildings in terms of just locks, shit doors, rust, things of that nature. New decking at alligators, so our current patron deck at alligator is in very bad shape. And repairs to our tiger exhibit as well. Several areas that are leaking, one thing that is not pointed out in the deferred maintenance slide, but we have several underground leaks that present every year, and part of that $2.2 million bond will help those issues as well. So we actually just had H and G out last week to fix another underground break from some old piping that we have undergrounded. We always like to put pretty good shows of animals and people in our presentations. And then 1.5 million will be going towards our new Potawatomi Zoo entrance, which is a $3 million capital campaign, the first phase of the zoo's master plan. So we are leveraging right now $450,000 in regional cities funding, and we've raised $1.5 million in private funding, and that is the funding that we have broke ground with. The new entrance is designed to accommodate more guests per year, improve guest flow. And I just would like to note that, you know, as part of this, since 2014, since we did our first public-private partnership with the city of South Bend and then Use Parks and Arts, we have raised over $3.5 million in capital funding. Part of that is towards this, as well as other capital endeavors, the carousel and such, and we are planning for the future. And just some additional notes, everything, as Aaron mentioned, is going to be ADA compliant, bathrooms and thoroughfares, which we do not currently have at our entrance, and bathroom wise, throughout the entire zoo, we are grandfathered in on ADA accessibility. We'll have a family bathroom, a new point-of-sale system, improved gift shop experience, will increase per cap from a revenue standpoint, twice as much space for education classes, which means our mission of education programming, and a dedicated and much safer way to get groups and field trips into the entrance. So that's just some of those pieces as far as the entrance is concerned. And I think I'm turning it over to bond counsel. A bond now?
I'm Randy Romolo, serving as bond counsel at, from Barnes and Thornburg, with offices at 100 North Michigan. I would just speak briefly to the ordinance. The ordinance is a parameters ordinance, saying, meaning that it is providing for the issuance of bonds with a maximum interest rate of 6%, a maximum principal amount, a maximum term. As was mentioned in the committee by Herschel, the intent would be that once the bonds are sold, obviously, we have a rate locked in, we expect it to be less than 6%. I'll let Herschel speak to that. But for purposes of the approval process, we need to identify the not to exceed amounts, and that's why those are set forth in the ordinance. The bonds per the ordinance would be payable from the economic development portion of the local income tax. There are some bonds outstanding that these bonds would be issued on parity with those bonds, so they're, these would be on parity with those. The ordinance also proves a form of financing. The ordinance also proves a form of financing agreement with the Zoological Society. The bond proceeds, once the bonds are issued, would be deposited with a bond trustee. The Zoological Society would be spending the proceeds on the projects. The bond proceeds would be released from the trustee to pay for those costs upon approval by a city representative. So typical in these economic development transactions, there is a process by which the payment requisition would come to the city. The city would sign off, and it would go to the trustee to be sure that the monies are being spent for the projects that are referenced in the ordinance. With that, I'll turn it over to Herschel for any comments he has on the financing structure.
Yeah, currently, as Randy laid out--
Sorry, Herschel, please state your name and address.
Oh, sorry, excuse me. Herschel Farson, Crowe LLP, out of Indianapolis, Indiana, serving as Minister of Advisor to the city on this deal. As Randy laid out, it is a max parameters, a maximum interest rate, not to exceed six percent. Currently, looking at the market, we're about four percent, but once again, until we price the bond or one another for sure. But coming in significantly under that max parameter, but once again, this is just more of a framework of what we're coming in at under when we do the financing. So I can ask any questions that you may have as relates to the financing as well.
Are there any questions from council for presenter at this time? Yes?
Yes. Thank you all for the work you all do and for the presentation. I know we've talked about it being this bond and everything that's being spread out over some time. If it was done at a shorter length of time, and like you say, ten years, what would that, would we save money in doing it at that standpoint, instead of having it extended out, when you consider all the interest and everything else from that standpoint? What are your thoughts regarding that?
You know, I would say the shorter the life of the bonds is, you're going to be paying less in interest. At this particular point in time, I don't have that difference, but, you know, by shortening the bond issue, we'll be paying less in interest. However, you will be paying a higher in debt service, obviously, to reduce the principal amount over a short period of time.
Question for you. Given our financial situation, that we've had a double A rating and everything else, are we able then to, with all of our financial situation, pay it at a higher, what did you say there?
Shorter term?
Shorter terms, and pay more monies? That's what I would like to see, instead of it being spread out. If we're able to do it, because, you know, it's like the issue of, you want to finance your house over a thirty-year term versus a fifteen-year term. If you are able to do it in a fifteen-year term, it makes better sense. If you don't have the finances, thirty years, you have to deal with that. Or even a card note. I mean, I was going through a tough time, did it six. When I was going through a better time, do it in three. And so, and you save money that way. So given our strength of our city's finances, are we able then to do it at a shorter time to save the interest, save the money, get the zoo their needs, and at the same time, save taxpayers' money that we can use that money on other issues?
I might jump in and get Herschel thirty seconds to think about, but I would say, from a rating agency standpoint, the higher the annual payment on the bond, the more stress that you have on your finances, and so you may actually place at risk the great rating that the city currently has. The more expenses you have on an annual basis reduces perhaps the amount of cash reserves that you may have. So you may, in the long run, benefit by paying less interest, but in the short term, you may affect your credit rating negatively, which may increase the cost of borrowing for any of the projects you may have.
Well, in this case, given the fact that it's three point seven million, with that, I mean, it's a lot of money if you consider any of the things. But given our whole city budget and everything else, it's a small piece of it. So with the only three point seven million dollars of it, will that low number, even though it's millions, given what we're dealing with, will that low number add to the stress that is going to automatically take the bond rating that we've had for, since I've been on this council? Shouldn't that stress already cover that, with only three point seven million?
I think the bigger question is more of a, what the plan is and working with the Controller's Office on projects that are going to be coming out of each particular year from a revenue standpoint. That's a consulting we'll be doing with the city if they desire to shift priorities or put a heavier burden on the revenue that are coming in to shorten it from a debt service standpoint. As it stands right now, in working with the Controller's Office, it has made more sense to stretch it out over twenty years to keep the cash flow at a minimum level that's coming out. But that is definitely something that we can talk with the Controller's Office.
Because, I mean, if we did it at half the time, how much stress are we talking about? I mean, me picking water versus this is more stress, if I only pick up this, it's less stress, but I can handle both, but it doesn't bother me worth a dime worth of a thing. So, and then the second thing on that is, what's the difference in payments? If you have a fifteen-year mortgage versus a thirty-year mortgage, yeah, you go from paying something from maybe a five hundred dollar a month mortgage to maybe a six hundred dollar a month mortgage, but at the same time, you pay it off, and then you can utilize more when you look at the city's strength down the long run, too. You have a little hit per month, but at the same time, it's going on from that standpoint. So it's a give-or-take in apples from that standpoint, but I think it helps us, as we look at these kind of things, to shorten, while we have the financial strength of our credit, to take advantage of monies, because we may not always have that. And my thing is, when we have good credit, even in a home standpoint, then she fed fifteen year mortgages. If my credit is, or a car, two, four, two-year mortgage is for a car, but if I have rough times, of course, those are for longer periods of time, the thirty-year mortgage and everything else. Since we have a good time and we are in that, why can't we operate like we're that? That's where my concern is, because the zoo gets their monies, the taxpayers get theirs, we end up getting times, why can't we go for that?
It's something we can evaluate with the Controller's Office in lieu of other commitments they have coming out of those revenues.
Is there a way that we can, is there a way that we can look at those revenues and delay this vote, not because of anybody's opposing, the zoo not getting their monies, but a delayed vote to the eighteenth, oh, eighteenth, to the eighth of October, where we can look at, what's the difference again, like a mortgage? Are we paying six hundred dollars versus five hundred dollars? And can save that? And in two weeks, we can have less in two weeks. We can send that information to us, we can make a public to everybody else, so they know what they're doing. We have less money, that we're putting on interest rates, the zoo gets all their money, we get our savings for the city, it's a win-win for everybody else, and we save money. Can we do that?
Currently, the way the, the way the resolution is laid out, we're doing it not to exceed twenty years. So as we work with the Controller's Office, if it is the desire of the city and it makes financial sense of the city, we do have the opportunity to, to reduce the length. So this resolution is not to exceed twenty years. So there is that opportunity to do that.
The only reason I would, I mean, I like that, I'm glad you shared that. I would like to do something that's not to exceed ten years, but before I can do diligence in suggesting that to my colleagues, I would just have to see the numbers. You see what I'm saying? Because of the fact that, I can see the numbers when my mortgage person told me, what's the advantage of the thirty-year versus the fifty? I looked at the numbers, because I was about to build a thirty years. He said to me, if you go fifteen, here's your numbers. And I looked at the numbers, and I'm like, well, that's a little bit more, but it saves in the long run. So I don't have those numbers, and you don't have those numbers, and I'm saying that if we could get those numbers within a short period of time, we still can make the decision. They still can have their money, but we can take a look at it. Or we can just go ahead, if my colleagues feel safe enough, I'm okay with your wisdom or their wisdom if we looked at a ten-year deal and not a twenty-year deal. I'm even okay with that. But if somebody wants to look at those numbers, I think we're okay. I would just prefer that we look at a ten-year deal and do, make an addendum to that resolution for ten years instead of twenty, and I'd be greatly supportive of that.
I think, as Herschel said, I mean, the way the ordinance is set up, and it's set up in parameters, so certainly there's nothing stopping the city from issuing bonds at less than a twenty-year term. The issue would be exactly what that should be. I mean, if rates were to go up a little bit, if we were to lock in a ten-year term, that might not be fiscally prudent.
So we don't know those numbers right now?
And we won't know them, I'm sorry to interrupt, we won't know the actual interest rate until we sell bonds. And so we have to have some parameters, and so I think the ordinance is set out, again, with the six percent interest rate, we certainly would never expect the taxes on bond rate to be at six percent, would take us back to the nineteen eighties. But the term is the same way. We, you know, if it's a twenty-year term, and the bonds end up being eighteen or seventeen years, or something less than that, that gives the controller and the administration the flexibility, based on, as Herschel said, all of the other parameters that they're focused on in the coming years. It isn't next year, the year after, it's the tenth, the twelfth, the thirteenth, the fifteenth year, whatever year that is, the tenth year of that financing, knowing that the cash flow is there to make the debt service without, you know, reducing revenues.
Granted, but I think in our attorney, I can read this directly to you, what kind of language, if we want to keep that in vote on it tonight, is there some type of language that we could have that, strengthen that? Because to me, we have not had a hisp, well, and if I can recommend me wrong, if we just leave it where it is at twenty, there's no incentive to get it done at ten years or whatever, the five years or whatever, that standpoint. I'm cautious in saying, well, just twenty years from that standpoint. I would like to see this at a ten-year standpoint, or shorten that time, so we can work on that. See where my head is on that?
I do. I think the incentive to the Controller's Office and the administration to make the best economic decision on behalf of the city. So if they would look at the numbers and determine that ten years is a better fiscal decision for the city, they have the opportunity to do that under the ordinance as it's written.
As it's written now?
As it's written now. All of the ordinance says is the maximum term is twenty years. When it comes time to settle a bond, the Controller's Office, who would advise the council on it, determines that it would be economically more beneficial to the city to shorten that term to ten years, twelve years, or whatever. They have the authority to do that based on what's in the ordinance as it is.
The last thing, based on what I'm done, you said that they won't know that information?
Well, no, that what I think Herschel referred to, you can look at different terms and different estimates of interest rates and predict what the rate might be at a particular maturity. So you would know whether ten, twelve, fourteen years, what the annual payment would be over the life of the bond at each of those maturities. So before the bonds are sold, the Controller's Office, with Herschel's advice, can determine what the economics would look like based on an assumed interest rate for each of those maturities.
So then--
But the idea is that we come to you, and this is very common for all types of bond ordinances, whether it's sewage works, water works, or tip revenue bonds, that we come to the council, we come to whichever body is approving the bonds, with kind of a parameter, so that the Controller's Office would have that authority just prior to the bond sale to work with Herschel to come up with the best economic, as was mentioned, the best economic deal for the city.
And so when that comes up, will you all be able to provide us written documents that says, okay, we went with the fifteen, or we went with the twenty, or we went with the ten, based on this kind of information, that we would be able to give to our public, and we can see that? And then we were able to handle a ten, and it didn't add any stress to us because, or the amount of stress that added to us, we could handle over the fifteen, we handled it this way, that kind of stuff? And knowing that we are not just locked into a twenty without any kind of parameters, that's my issue.
Right. And you're not, I mean, with this ordinance, you're not locked into a twenty-year. I mean, it really is the Controller's Office, with Herschel's advice, making that determination just prior to the bond sale, telling the underwriter, here's what we want to see in terms of what the bond maturity schedule should look like.
And you can give us that information right when you make that final negotiation and send it to the council, so we'll be able to take that and share that with our people?
I will work with the, with Controller's Office to communicate the parameters of the final decision that's going to be economically feasible for the city. So that's not a problem.
Okay. All right. I look forward to that document, and that could be a regular pad, because I haven't seen one of those in the past, but I know everyone pushed that request, but I will be doing that more often, because, I mean, there's a history of us saying, well, twenty years and twenty and thirty plus everything else, and we're getting a lot of pressure on us, but it's not, it's working in the short term, but people saying, what are we doing for our future? What are we doing for that standpoint? And can we cover some of that under our good days, because we don't know if down the road we're going to be some challenging days? So as much as we can take care of, and sun shining, it would be better for us to do that instead of waiting for the rain. I appreciate your time.
Scott, you got any question?
No question. No question?
Yeah, we'll do comments later, but we're going to do questions now. So no more questions?
So you were tasked with that twenty-year kind of framework, right? Not to exceed that. So I guess, you know, this is coming to us at this point, I guess I want to know, and maybe this will get at Councilmember Davis's, some of his questioning, is, did you look at other lengths and terms, a ten or a fifteen-year, and crunch those numbers? And then you obviously came with a, you know, a kind of final product that had that cap of twenty years. So let me know that you either were asked to look at shorter terms and what those were, and then if it's you or whomever else in the administration, why did we hone in on the less, you know, the twenty-year cap? And I understand the flexibility that's, that's within the ordinance as it's written, but, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, no. I appreciate the question. So in work with the Controller's Office, the desire in lieu of the three point seven million project fund and signs on the bond issue, we looked at, the desire was to look at a twenty-year. One of the other chavises of that is the, looking at the asset of what was going to be built, so really stretching out over the asset, really the extending the life of the asset and have the debt kind of stretch out over that. If it is the desire of the city, we can look at something shorter, but in lieu of, were the expectancy life of the asset has been over twenty years, that was the desire in lieu of also other potential commitments from the economic development portion of the lead, we have only looked at the twenty-year options. But we also can look at something shorter if it was the desire of the Controller's Office.
Herschel, I think you just hit on something that was important, that we touched on in committee, and you said the other. So, just so I, because I want to understand this, too, because I would much rather just pay three point seven million dollars to get three point seven million dollars, right? I'd rather we pay cash.
Yeah, I agree with that.
But what, I think what Ms. Hagenold said in committee was that this would be paid out of a fund that we've already, and correct me if I'm wrong, we already have commitments out of that fund that we are obligated to, right? So, in essence, and again, this gets to the complexity of city budgeting and all of the different funding sources, but because it's coming out of, you said edit, right? Edit funds? And we're already obliged to pay certain other things out of edit funds, we can't exceed a certain amount of debt service in a year. Am I understanding that correct? Correct. So I don't know if that helps at all.
Well, the only thing about that is the fact that we helped set those priorities. And a part of that edit funds itself, therefore, if we know that this is going to help save us on this end, and then we can adapt or massage some of the priorities. To take, for instance, again, when the gentleman I was getting my house, it told me that it would be better for me to look at a fifteen-year mortgage. Well, I just adjusted some of the other things I was planning to do, because if I adjusted that bill to pay for that one, then my house paid faster. So when I looked at my priorities and he made that presentation to me, all of a sudden my priorities changed. And we teamed up, because here, I can have my house for fifteen years, so, but I was going to spend that other hundred dollars on per month, I could adjust that to maybe something else, or get a second job and teach them to get more clients and take care of that, and then take care of this. So while your point is well-taken, if we see that other option, then since we control what, with the input of the office, of what our priorities are, then we can say, well, yeah, we have these things, but if we can save money with this, then let's adjust that priority that way and come back and remember. So I see what that is.
I hear you, and maybe if I can, that's all right. And maybe if I can, so I think, I think, I think what Councilmember Davis is getting at is, and what I've heard a lot during this budget cycle is, this body's main responsibility is these sorts of financial decisions. And so for us to make this decision based on these maximums, it's kind of uncomfortable, right? I think that's what--
That's correct.
Okay.
You hit it one hundred percent. And so, and therefore, we can just take it in priority? I mean, the idea of--
decisions. And so for us to make this decision based on these maximums, it's kind of uncomfortable, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's what you're doing.
That's correct.
Okay.
You hit it 100%. And so, and therefore, we can just take it in priority. I mean, the idea of you getting the needs met?
Well, I think anybody's debating that, right?
No, we're not debating that. We're not debating that. I'm glad for it and plan to go and visit. But the issue is, is just in terms of tax dollars and whatever, can, back to your point, the first one, you got me really thinking on that. I mean, if we have the cash, just pay it. But since we're going to go to a financing option, then can we, what's the shortest financing option that's possible, that we may adapt things or adjust things to still take care of what we need, or make some, and then take care of everybody's needs, that's all.
I think if I could add two points, I think that the Controller's Office is well-positioned to make that determination on behalf of the city. The second point I would make is that these are payable from the economic development portion of the lit, the level income tax. That is based on the income taxes collected in the community, and yes, while the economy is good, those taxes tend to rise. But if the economy drops off, if there's a recession, et cetera, those income, that income tax tends to drop as well. And so, you know, it's not a, it's not as level as property taxes have been historically.
I understand.
And so, again, you know, with, Herschel can speak to this, but working with the Controller's Office, you do want to make sure that not only are you looking at, as you're saying, that you could, you could establish priorities and how you spend the money you receive, but you also have to be cognizant of the money that would be coming into the city, the local income tax.
Oh, agree. No disagreeing with that at all.
And with all due respect to you, sir, I think, and this, I'm sorry, I think, let's, sorry.
Let's understand.
Yes, that is the response.
No, no, you go ahead.
No, I think the other thing is, is mentioned before, is that this is not the only obligation that's coming out of the edit portion of the lit.
Yeah, I agree.
I think in working with the Controller's Office, in lieu of other projects that are coming out, other anticipated projects and other commitments, the desire is, at this point in time, 20 years, to account for other commitments out there, as well as other potential opportunities for other projects.
Did you have another question?
There's more to come, right?
Okay.
We can, no, well, I just want to make sure that, so I don't think, Ms. Hockenhold, I don't think that Councilmember Davis, I don't want to speak for you, but I certainly for myself, not doubting that the Controller's Office is well-positioned to make these decisions. Careful, I said it. I think what Councilmember Davis and maybe some of the other council members' concern is, that they have been elected to guard the city's finances. And so having more of a picture, a better picture, right? Is that what you're...
You're saying...
Okay, well, I just, I'm trying to clarify for you.
Questions?
Councilor Scott, you have a job, is that what?
Just to add, I think the council also needs to be mindful of the fact that earlier this evening, we said we'd like to have more money for roads, we'd like to have more money for quality of life in neighborhoods. Every time we obligate ourselves to, in this case, perhaps a larger bond payment, that means we have less flexibility in our budget, less options to do other, to address other priorities. I, I like the, you know, the house financing analogy, too. I understand it. I went from 30 to 15, and things get a little tight sometimes, and I can't do other things that I, you know, maybe I'll hang on to the car longer than I, longer than I would have otherwise. And the city, in a larger sense, makes those kinds of decisions. I respect the fact that this administration and the Controller's Office has the wherewithal to evaluate the things they would like to do now and likely do in the future, and, and keep their options open, so that this council and the next council, they don't have to come to and say, hey, we don't have the money for that, we've got to, you know, we won't have that for seven more years until we pay off this bond. And if we happen to get lucky enough to have a continued good economy and money comes in greater than expected, they budget conservatively for these kinds of things, we hear that all the time, we can always pay that bond off early.
Correct.
You know, and avoid longer-term finance charges. Just like on your house, if you're in a position where you can make double payments, as my ex-wife has done.
I'm sorry.
I've got a dozen more.
Strike that from the record, please.
I've got a pair of quarters.
Better with money than I am.
Thank you, John. We got the point.
I'm for coming down on the side of there being more money there for other capital improvements, for streets and roads and all those basic services that the city needs to do. Not to prolong this any further, but I need to say this. You know, I respect what Oliver Davis is saying. However, the decision on what the payment is for the car started with Parks, Parks Commission, which I think Mr. Neal, who's pretty savvy financially, is a member of that, and it went through the city, which they have obligation, and I think a legal obligation at times, and I think the two gentlemen above us standing in front of us have a legal obligation as well, that irresponsible bonds, which actually came between, before the Economic Development Commission, which we voted favorably for. So there was other people looking at this way before it got to us. We're not the sole responsibility in bringing this along. I think it's up to the petitioners and the presenters to decide if they want this to be heard the way it is. Again, this is a maximum, this is a placeholder. We know the interest rate is probably not going to be at 6%. This committee has, or this council, over the years, have done the same thing. It's a placeholder, it's a maximum, that's what we got to look at in respect to the presenters and the petitioners, that if they want to vote on this, they need to ask for a vote, and I think they have, by bringing this forth the way it's written right now. The other point of it is, from John Murphy to John Hockenhold, there's many times that these gentlemen have come before us before to ask for where there's been a renegotiation of interest rates, and we've actually cut money out of that way. And I agree with John Vorty that bonds can be paid off earlier, too, when they can. Also thing I got to look at is the projects. They might not have all the projects, as we heard in committee, come before us within a year to do all that, so the payment over this over time is fine. I, I respect the petitioners, and if they want to vote on this, I think we should give them a vote on it tonight.
I respect the petitioners also, and I appreciate all the wisdom from John Murphy's and all of those people, too. But I also say that we also have a fiduciary responsibility ourselves as elected officials, and we have to do that. And it is imperative for us to challenge you with these kind of questions, and to even put a fire onto you, and to let you know that we are looking at you and challenging you. We're paying you big bucks to come up here from Indiana and Minneapolis to look at that, which is great, and I appreciate your wisdom. You are a very intelligent person, and that I can look at and I can see, and I am important to that. And both of you, I've worked with you for the attorney for you many years, and your insight is very great in all the elements. But we also have insight here, too, and intelligence here, that we have to have this conversation. And I appreciate this conversation, whether we go to 30 years or 15 years, that's, the issue of 30-year and 15-year person, that's not necessarily being irresponsible. So I think if they chose to do 20 years and said that we want to do this project, and when she was 15 years irresponsible, I don't think we're fighting over the issue of irresponsibility here. We just, because I don't, I'm not challenging any of that. Again, we may look at some issues or prioritize and issues from that, that's okay. But the fact that you want to do roads and somebody wants to do that, okay, that, that's not being irresponsible, that's, again, priorities, okay? And so, therefore, I'm glad that we have had this, because our citizens are asking us these questions through emails and saying to us, have you, are you considering this interest rate? Have you considered 15 years? Are you considering 20 years? And for me to say, well, you know, the administration, they got it all packed, we got superstars down there, they're studying all, they all went to all these great schools, we shouldn't worry about it, they're going to ask why are we up here? So we have to ask these kind of questions, we have to challenge you for those kind of things, and that's where I am. Thank you.
Appreciate your question.
Just a reminder, we're still in the question portion, but we have Councilmember Roden has some more questions.
Still on the questions, thank you very much. From earlier committee discussions, just kind of looking to round out, and I'm sorry, these won't be the bond related, so it might be to Ms. Steen's place, and...
I have a quick bond.
Oh, go ahead, Father Phil.
Just a clarifying question.
Yep.
Didn't I hear that voting on this tonight, if we vote and pass it through, that it doesn't preclude us from getting a 10-year bond or looking at different, right? Is that what I heard?
That is correct.
So we could still get that information, we could vote, pass it, and still get that information, and make a different decision that less than 20 years is needed, or whatever.
Just a catch.
Okay, just, just clarifying.
That's what he said he was going to say to us, that's what I asked him for.
I'm just clarifying that we can move on this tonight.
If I may, just to clarify, I think the question is, if you vote on the ordinance tonight and approve it with the parameters, then it would be the city administration's review with Herschel, what makes sense economically. It wouldn't necessarily come back before you for a vote, I think, right? It would, I mean, that's...
I'm okay with that. My thing was not to come back for a vote, but to be informed and to be understood, but what was the understanding? Because my thing is, that's why I said it was an issue of fighting over all these other things. It was issue of, once you determine that, and you determine that to the 10-year or 15-year, then I need to know that. And because oftentimes, we had talked in a meeting we had before, many of the times when you all meet afterwards, and that, when you reassess the AA bonds, there's some kind of report that comes out of that, that we need to be involved in that, because I have not seen that. Because that's assessed, you said, after every kind of AA situation we get, every time you do a park bond. And that kind of information, I would love to have. I know they said they posted on some website or whatever, but, and Jennifer, we talked about getting that that time, remember that? Because again, when we're getting emailed or Facebooked and all those kind of stuff, that you're not considering these kind of things, it's just great to have. And most times, we say, well, we have a AA rate and we have AA, but what does that mean, and what determined that? And your report to us would be great. So, thank you.
Questions?
Yes, please. This is going to be like rapid fire, so maybe Jen and Erin, so total hours bond, legal counsel overall. I mean, these things aren't entered lightly, and they have a price tag to them, and all the work that goes beforehand. So somebody get, throw out an estimate, how many hours so far in the, in the project, in terms of the bond counsel? 20, 60?
Yeah, we're at a fixed fee.
Okay.
Yeah, so Scott, based on an hour and a half.
Okay. And this goes back, though, till June or July? I mean, this goes back, right? How far back? Anybody can answer that?
I'm starting to work in May.
Okay, thank you. So rounding out the public record, please. The zoo has had clean audits?
Yes.
Okay.
Over here.
Thank you. I thought you said that, but I was, whether it was transfer or use, I just wanted to clear up. And then the audit from the last AZA visit that was requested in committee, could you round out the record, either, just round out the record and include that and forward that to council?
Sure.
Okay, because I, I think it's important to, as you said, there were some things identified that carried over, I think for transparency's sake, and I know I would appreciate that. And then the other question, I think was a legal question with regard to the renewal of the agreement, once it expires. I thought I saw that somewhere, and someone was going to get some, and we were busy through our break. So is that an exclusive, is it an exclusive authority of the Park Board, or will that come back to the council, or will there be any council involvement? I guess I'm going to ask all those.
Sure. Benjamin Dory, Deputy Controller, offices on the 12th floor. What I emailed to you, Councilmember Roden, in the interim...
Thanks, I didn't have an opportunity. Go ahead.
Was a copy of the agreement recently approved this past June...
Okay.
By the Park Board and by PCS to take effect January 1st.
Okay.
That's the new 15-year agreement that we've been discussing. And the term of that agreement, which is a lease and management agreement for the zoo property, is limited to those 15 years and will expire and conclude on December 31st of 2033, unless there is an extension that's usually negotiated and agreed to, to take it beyond that date. So that's the provision that states this, is referenced in that email that I shared. So if you want to go back and refer to the document itself, you'll find it in section 2.4.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't say where the renewal provision that you had in mind comes from.
It may have been from the existing...
Perhaps, so I'm not familiar with that agreement, but I don't find it in the new...
I just want to know what the status is going for.
Sure.
Okay, so I appreciate that.
Sure.
So Article 2.0, Section 2.4.
I appreciate it, yes.
There's a provision, is, still, there's a meet annual, discuss the proposed revisions, change in the allocations of funds, or on, or any budgetary concerns. So that is within this agreement, correct?
Yeah, I believe that's the same, the same paragraph, the same text covers that.
Okay, great. And then with regard to Article 13.0, Section 13.1, the mayor has the authority to exercise an appointment to the public, to the zoo board. I want to know if the mayor is going to exercise that authority.
He already has. So Dave Newfer is our mayor appointee through the end of 2019, and he was sworn in by Ms. Fowler, the city clerk, I believe, last year.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, let me see, in terms of payments, when they'll hit 2019, that's the bulk of this, right? So 3.7, and then again, in 2023, 1.1 million, correct?
Yes.
So those will hit in a January, June timeframes of those years. Give me a second, where was I going on that? I'm going to hold that in thought and come back to it, I'm sorry, if I can recall what the question I had, I will. Mail appointment, okay. I guess I want to add, you, this process, I mean, this is a big deal, right, for the city of South Bend in so many ways, right? And I think this council as a whole has been very generous in terms of, you know, recognizing some deferred maintenance that just go on and on non, and wanting to hit those, right? And chip away at them over time. So I guess in terms of partnership going forward, the timing of your, your schedule improvements, your fund development plan, I think we mentioned this in committee. I mean, I don't want to be a funded done kind of entity, right? Because this is big. And so, you know, I'm not going to assert a council member on a board or anything like that, or even we make an appointment to your board because of your track record and what you've done and what you've done today. But I do think we would all benefit from the council being brought along earlier in the process and that, and that continued relationship.
I agree.
Yes, and as we talked about in the committee meeting earlier, I'm more than happy to attend any council or council committee meeting, as I'm sure Erin will come with me as well, and update everybody on fund development plans, as well as give status updates on the 2.2 million and 1.5 million, anytime. So I would actually appreciate the opportunity. I think it's good to have the communication, so definitely.
And my, my comment is, this is kind of a lot like my relationship with my kids. I ask a lot of questions because I care.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yes.
So, and I don't think there's anybody else on this council, you know, that has any other motive for asking questions, other than being informed and, you know, trying to be best stewards. So I think you have done an excellent job from the time you were before multiple bodies, in terms of this as a need, you know, that we looked at across different entities. And then you've been very consistent, very persistent, very passionate through all of the budget presentation, and you've followed up in a very timely manner, too, with the detail. So I, I want to thank you for that as part of my comment. It's not a question, but I think it's a well-deserved comment.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
I think I have a question to refresh my memory, Marson or Erin. I know that there were concerns from the council regarding the ordinance and so on, and I made an office with a... from the council regarding the ordinance and so on, and I made an office with a team, and met with all of the parties and stakeholders that were involved in, including the council. So, I appreciate the information and us talking about better communication and open dialogue. One of the things that I think I recall at one of the meetings, I talked about with paying off bonds, is that when you guys had a bond before, it was paid off early. And that's part of the public-private or, there was some partnership, I think when I had a conversation with, maybe it was Mr. Newfer. Is he gone?
He did leave.
Okay.
Maybe he had an emergency in one of the stores.
Oh, I'm sorry. But I guess I just wanted to go into the fact that if there is an opportunity to pay off the bond early, that I ask that we continue on with the voting and also hope that there will be support in that state. Because if I heard it correctly, as well, I felt that if there's an opportunity for us to be fiscally responsible and overall have cost savings, and not reducing the amount every year that has gone down with the public-private partnership, I am in support of that.
Seeing no other questions, we'll move to the public portion. Is there anyone from the public who should speak in favor?
Good evening, council members. My name is Bob Urbanski. I live at 21533 Golden Maple Court, South Bend, 46628. I'm a retired South Bend businessman. Since my retirement, I've been spending some time on charitable and civic projects, volunteering my time trying to help them. About five years ago, I was asked by one of the zoo board members to get involved when they were promoting the PPP, private-public partnership, and I found out some facts and did so. It has been an incredible success since the city has agreed to do that program. In fact, listening to the city controller, I think that model, they want to do that with some more departments, some more things. They're talking about pursuing that in future years. It's a great example. I've also been involved with, they put a new exhibit in for the copy and the fundraising effort for the new entrance. But most currently, I was asked by the zoo administration to help with this deferred maintenance issue that they're facing, which needs correction before June, before their inspection by the ABZ, Crazy B. The work that's involved in it is staggering. The amount of money, just to give you an idea, the time, the effort, the planning that's got to happen, but they only have left from now till June to get that done. Councilman Davis, I understand your analogy with the mortgage and what a better way to finance this is, but what I can tell you from my construction experience is that delaying this, this approval and the start of this repair work and getting into it in earnest is going to be expensive to the cost of that repair work. The later it goes, more gets in the winter, the more the cost for the work. So, it's imperative that they get moving full bore as quickly as possible, getting these things repaired and fixed, so the zoo gets recertified in June. I humbly ask for your support of this bill. The zoo has been an amazing experience for me, working around there and watching people talk and look, and see how much better it looks and how much nicer it looks. There are amazing things happening there, and you should take time to visit your zoo. It's an amazing place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Alex Giorgio Rubin, 825 South Logan Street. So, I live in River Park, and the zoo is basically my neighbor. And I'm the parent of a special needs child. The updates to the zoo to make it ADA compliant and add a new family restroom would be extremely beneficial to my family and I'm sure to other families in my position. So, I'm asking that you approve this. The zoo must evolve to maintain its current exhibits, not only for safety, public enjoyment, but also for animal welfare.
I should never cut in front of Mark Neal. Thank you, common council members. My name is John Anella, and I live at 124 South Jacob Street, South Bend, Indiana. Since I only have five minutes, I can't talk about the bond structure. I'd love to, but I'll make the case for why this is a good investment for the city of South Bend. I'm speaking tonight about your continued investment in the Potawatomi Zoo. I'm speaking as a neighbor and as a longtime member of the Potawatomi Zoo Board. I live a mile from the zoo, and this morning, like many mornings, I woke up to the roars of the lions. I can't imagine there are many places where you can wake up and go to sleep with an experience like that. And keep in mind, those lions are roaring from their New Deal era enclosure that is badly in need of repairs and upgrades. Not only are these repairs and upgrades necessary to ensure the health of our big cats, but to also ensure the renewal of our AZA accreditation in 2019. There are many reasons to support the zoo. Time does not allow me to mention them all. So, I will mention one that is very important to me. A few years back, we entered the public-private partnership with the city, and I can attest to its success. The partnership has resulted in great improvements to the quality of the zoo for the visitors, employees, animals, and has saved the city money, which we saw the budget report that's always important. A few years ago, we conducted a water usage audit and discovered that the zoo was one of the largest users of water in the city. In 2015, the zoo used 54 million gallons of water, and by 2016, we had cut that to 18 million gallons, a reduction of nearly two-thirds. That's 36 million gallons of water annually that was needlessly being dumped into Eric Orvath's sewer system and being treated by the taxpayers and didn't need to be, saving the city hundreds of thousands of dollars, and also lessening the strain on our sewer system. And as a resident of the Sunning Beach area, we know the sewer system in the Sunning Beach area can be a little overtaxed at times. With nearly 250,000 visitors a year, it rivals Kowalewski Stadium as one of the top attractions for families in the area, while also educating thousands of schoolchildren each year. This example of water conservation demonstrates the zoo not only promotes conservation and protection of animals and their habitats globally, but also demonstrates its commitment to protecting and conserving the environment right here in our backyard. So, this is just one example of why the Potawatomi Zoo, actually, there are probably a few in there, is a wonderful investment for the city of South Bend. So, that is also the reason why the Potawatomi Zoo deserves your support. So, since we're talking about the zoo, Marcy showed the pictures of the animals. I don't have any animals to show you. So, we always got to have animal ponds when we talk about the zoo. So, I'll leave you with this. I'm not lying when I say you should support and visit the Potawatomi Zoo. You will be utterly amazed by how totally awesome it is.
Thank you.
That's a hard act to follow.
You don't need to.
Mark Neal, at 108 North Main Street, here in South Bend, also president of the park board. I think, I know you know, again, for the public record, the private-public partnership that was entered into five years ago had the goals of the city was that we should be able to create a better asset at a lower cost without any impact on the then city employees who worked at the zoo. And that was the commitment that the mayor set forth and that the Zoological Society very willingly embraced. And I think they, as others have said, I think they more than honored that commitment with record attendance, record fundraising, and as part of the zoo's recertification process, a request of us to renew the agreement for five years. We then had the conversation about what the needs were, and these deferred maintenance needs are significant. And you go to the zoo and you can see them. And so consequently, discussion was, if we could figure out a way to provide more money sooner, but less money over long term, what would that look like? And that's where the 15-year agreement came into play. That we could do a lot more now to make this asset a higher quality asset that should allow us to continue to attract more people, raise more private funds, have a better zoo, have a better quality of life asset at a lower cost to the community. And I think they, and again, I think that's been demonstrated. I will personally take a mea culpa, and I apologize to this council, that as the parks board, we did not come to you to say, here's what we're looking to do to figure this out. Because it was something that we looked at as a normal course of business, but 15 years is a long time, 20 years is a long time. But it was a commitment made that we had a great partnership, we all benefited from that partnership, and therefore we should continue it with, and they've been certainly expanding the tent of getting more people involved in the zoo in a very meaningful way. Regarding the bond, lots of discussion about the timeframe, the term. Just to say that I would ask that we do that as soon as we possibly can, because I think we need to get that deferred maintenance work going, so that is done before June and the recertification comes in, and hopefully we get that done at a very reasonable cost. So, I just, I would appreciate your support. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Any members of the public who should speak in opposition?
Sue Castle, 402 Kennedy Drive. I'm here as a citizen advocate, so I have multiple comments from people. Sharon Benicki cannot be here, and you all know her. She just had three words for you at the council, and her three words were, "Oh, hell no." So, that was from Sharon. The animal advocates, I'm on a lot of animal groups, they want the zoo closed. They don't want it supported at all. Some members of the public thought that the groundbreaking before the approval of the funding showed that the council is just a rubber stamp to the administration and that citizens have no voice. Others thought that the parks have been given millions and millions and millions in debt, that if they want this funded, they should use some of those funds. The city's tired, the citizens are tired of funding the parks, and they want you to fund things like roads, water, sewers, addressing crime and lead issues. They feel that your priorities are not straight. The total cost for 20 years at 6% is too much. That's directly from me. I think if you give them that leeway, they'll take it. And I think it's up to the council to say, no, it's 10 years at 5% or less. I think, you know, we have this whole debt discussion. I think council needs to rein some things in and exert some control on that. And anyway, for the most part, the citizens think that your priorities need to stop being things like this and start, need to be the basics. And if you're going to take a bond out, it needs to be something that everyone benefits from in their neighborhoods. They're tired of seeing what could be their neighborhood funds, their road funds, their sewer funds. Someone said, "I'm tired of the shit in my basement. I don't give whatever about the zoo." And someone else said, "I don't give a GD about this. I want my roads fixed." And I think maybe you're not understanding of the frustration of the citizens of where your priorities are and where you're putting our money. So, those were the comments I got. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jesse Davis, P.O., Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. As are elected officials in a totally different body of the government than the mayor's office and the administration, the mayor's administration are the ones who dream up these wonderful things. We elect you people to make sure that our needs are taken care of, not wants, but needs. So, we think you should concentrate a little bit more on that. There's only three council members, I believe, up here, maybe four, who were even here when this became a public-private partnership. The four on the end weren't here. Mr. Vorty, I think, was in the clerk's office. I sat through many council meetings, many, where the Zoological Society wanted to basically take over the zoo. And it wasn't just a question of whether or not employees would be affected, but it was also on where taxpayers' dollars being invested in this zoo would be saved. Mr. Perry came up here a little bit ago, and he said, "Well, we were paying $1 million, and then we paid $900,000. Now we're down to $800,000 next year," whatever. Well, we're still not getting a return on our investment, because if you're going to hand over a bond for $4.2 million, if you divide that bond over 20 years, we're still paying out $266,000 a year. That's with no interest. That's just on the principal 4.2 million. So, if we're only saving roughly $100,000 a year, now maybe $200,000 a year, we're still in the hole. We're still in the hole. So, when the Zoological Society took over, yes, you wanted to protect employees that were already there at the zoo. They might have done that, but you need to also protect us. We don't want to keep sinking money into this, because we were told it would be such a grand zoo once the Zoological Society took over. The burden was going to be off the taxpayers' back for the most part, but we're not seeing that. We're not seeing that at all. And the numbers don't lie. So, bottom line is, if you pass this, you need to make sure that, you know, the return on our investment is worthwhile. Just going to look at the animals, I took my grandson there last year. I was not impressed. You guys are talking, oh, well, we need to make these repairs. Mr. Urbanski, who's one of our biggest Democratic contributors, I was surprised they brought Andy Heters here tonight. But guess what? You said deferred maintenance. To me, deferred means it should have been done, but it hasn't been done. So, why hasn't it been done? Why did we put it off? Mr. Urbanski himself said, "If you put it off, it's going to cost you more money." So, we've been putting it off, which in fact is increasing that cost, which is increasing the burden on the taxpayers. Doesn't make any sense. That's not fiscal responsibility for you guys to sit here and keep voting this stuff through.
With that, the public portion is closed. There's five minutes for rebuttal.
I'll be brief. And I understand that these things can be complex, a little bit confusing and difficult to navigate at times. And there's no standard playbook for these types of things. But this public-private partnership is one that has proven to be fruitful. And this financing package you're being asked to approve tonight is part of a very long agreement that does these things that we think will provide a significant return on investment. But it leverages that public-private partnership, their time and resources that they're bringing to the table. It decreases burden on taxpayer, and it positions the zoo to improve and expand its impact well into the future. So, appreciate your support.
And with that, we'll turn it back over to the council for comments.
Comments?
For comments? Sure, we can go down the line and, okay. Any comments?
Just real quick, I want to thank Marcy Dean for sending out an email to all the council members, thanking them, and giving them information and being available for any questions or comments to this. You know, that's part of our work too, is doing our homework on this and reaching out to the parties that we need to for questions. I appreciate the conversations that you and I had. I don't know if any other council members took advantage of that. I do want to say I have respect for all my council members for their concerns and their due diligence and their questions that they're asked. You know, we got to look at it at different levels, I think, and then how we go about gathering our information. I do it differently than other people, so I didn't mean any disrespect to anybody earlier. You know, there are times where we got to do our homework, and sometimes that's, you know, after hours, weekends, whatever. But I do appreciate everybody being open and available for those questions and comments.
Any comments, John?
Nope.
Good.
Sorry, Mr. Anella elected, but he did. So, I dearly love the zoo, but to make this bearable in terms of what this bond is dealing with, especially in light of the fact that on August the 10th, it was announced prior to that, like I shared today, that we had already pledged $3.7 million. And since we had already pledged, it already was out there, that tonight to show that we were not outfoxed, that we have to come and ask all these questions, so we can do our due diligence to show that we have done all of our work, whether it's through meetings, which you and Marcy appreciate that, or whether it's through everything else. We have to show that, because people think that you, like you shared, are we rubber stamps and everything, and to have something that was announced in August, and I understand the issue you shared with the groundbreaking, I believe it was the groundbreaking would have been done after all of this stuff tonight, and then it would have been better, because it's shared, it looked like everything was done ahead of time. Tonight's just... Tonight's just out there. So while it's good for us to ask you questions, that we can come to your office, ask questions, but the public needs to hear these answers themselves. They need to hear questions. They need to hear that we ensure them. They need to know these things, not only us. Because I can know a lot of things, but if you don't know them and the people who are watching on Facebooks or watching another place will come and read our records, they need to know that we ask questions. And so that's why I said to show that we're not outfoxed, that we can do that. And so therefore, I am glad to have this and I'm glad to have had the discussion. And I appreciate that, and I think that in future references, we will all work together.
Yeah, so I just want to echo some sentiments and thank Ms. Dean for all the information that you provided and especially during committee this afternoon, for feeling all of those questions and being prepared and just the amazing work that you're doing at the zoo. Aaron, for the great work that you're doing heading up BPA and Mark on the park board. Thank you guys for being available and helping with this information. Obviously, we've talked about timing issues and, you know, those sorts of things, and everybody's kind of shared their thoughts on that. But above that, I think the timing thing that concerns me and Mr. Davis, not this one, Mr. Davis and the audience hit on this, deferred maintenance piece, it was the city that deferred a lot of this. And we hit on this in the committee meeting earlier today. And so while I wish that we could pay cash for this and I wish that there was some extra money that we could pave roads with, I recognize Ms. Hockenall, these are, we're talking about different funding sources here. And so again, as the newbie, my first rodeo, this is understanding wrapping my head around what can come out of what funds. And thank you for providing that information and being helpful along the way. But I think we have an obligation to this city asset for the maintenance that we, even though I wasn't here, the collective we, had deferred. And so again, although I wish that we could have paid for this a long time ago, paid cash upfront for this, I look forward to many years of seeing what Ms. Dean does with the zoo and the good things that this money goes to us. So thank you.
I feel informed and ready to vote. I think this is a big economic development piece in my estimation and ready to vote.
I wanted to just say, again, one of the things that was talked about, maybe a little bit more in committee, was what a valuable asset the zoo is to this community with regard to economic development, with the conservation work that's happening and all of these improvements, making this certainly a big piece of a destination that will continue to bring, not just enrich the children of South Bend with their education, send this being built or expanded upon, but also attract more people here to town. I think looking at this by itself, it's easy to say, "Oh, I resent all this money and that. What about roads? What about this?" But I just want to also remember how, when looking at the budget as a whole, I have been very impressed with how the city has responded to what residents have asked for, what council members have asked for, in terms of really important things like increasing the curbs and sidewalks. We see that that's going up, I believe, 50% this year, next year, with increasing money to help homeowners actually fix up their homes and lots of other pieces that we've been asking for. So I see it as a balance. I think we definitely need, no question, I'm always an advocate to responding to those basic, basic needs. And I think it's also important to have those quality of life, placemaking things that once we're living here in a beautiful home, you know, what are the other pieces that really kind of create a holistic approach to this being the very best place to live in these United States? That's what we're all going for. And so I want to thank all the folks who've done work on this, and I also want to thank the residents for keeping us on our toes and making us look through those numbers, making us have these conversations because even though it's almost 10 o'clock, I think the conversation was rich and I think it was really important to have. So we're doing a good job. Thank you all.
I would like to say, also, I'm just listening to all the conversations and all of which is very rich and needed. I think that this shows that this council, that we are doing the work, you know, we're asking those tough questions, we are digging deep, and that is our role to do so. And each council person has every right to ask questions, and I really appreciate not only the administration, but the bond council, as well as members of the park board and Mr. Perry coming and responding to all the questions that have been asked. And I feel very comfortable in terms of moving forward. One thing I would want to put on the table, this is a result of not being able to respond to the maintenance of the zoo, but also as we begin to look at other areas within the city, I think that's the conversation we need to have as we move out of this budget process. What other areas are we looking at that we've not been able to respond to? And either you pay now or you pay more down the road. So I think it's a good conversation to have. Part of the budget process, again, we're trying to refine, define, and redefine, and one of the areas that we talked about is that next year, 2019, that we will start with, the first discussion will pertain to debt and looking at, you know, TIF, and looking at those areas before we start looking at the budget process itself. So I would encourage council members, if you have any questions, any concerns, recommendations, that you give those to Jennifer after you get through this budget process. But again, every year, we try to do a better job and the conversation is rich. I tend to describe this as intellectual discourse, and it's good. It's good. And we are better because we've had the opportunity to have this level of discussion. So I thank all the council members for your feedback, and I'm ready to move forward.
Make a motion to send 4418 to the full council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. I entertain a motion to rise and resolve in the committee of the whole.
It's over.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Well, um...
Are they driving back to Andy's?
That's only...
There's a...
Good luck.
There's a suggestion for entertaining a motion for a three-minute break.
All we have is third reading. Let's go.
Some might not make it.
Okay, maybe.
Sorry. Okay, yeah, we can do it in three minutes. So, hey, no, 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 break. Yeah, if there's a risk, we'll do a break. Three-minute break? No, not with bathroom break. I need a motion. Somebody... Man, I'm supposed to sit... Back at 5:56. 9:56. 2:00 AM.
Why do we think we do it? We always do it. For 10-8. People always do it. You know, it doesn't matter. We have no say. This is a state thing. This is another Republican. It was like five, five or six years ago. No, they all of a sudden decided that we, all bodies, Mishwaka, us and St. Joe, had to vote on their budget, but we have no say in one thing or a dollar or not. So it's truly a rubber stamp. There's nothing that we can do with it, and there's no reason why, but somehow downstate, they didn't know why, that we have to vote on it and send it down. And it's, I don't even know why we have to comment on it. It's like, oh, okay. I mean, we're interested, I know, but we have no say. Okay, I'll, before we start, do you want to tell the transfer list?
Tell what?
We can't vote on your budget tonight.
10-day notice. We can't vote on it?
Not tonight.
Okay, that's fine. So they have to come back in eight. Okay, they come back. Okay, I'll come at eight.
Till early then. Put the kids to bed.
Put the kids to bed. That's right.
It's not your conversation.
Right? Well, that was early. Hey, seven years ago, I said the first thing, I was like, you know, it was like, we're not going to add any animals. We can barely keep going with what we're doing. It's like, why are we doing it? You know? That was a whole other regime. Yep. Did you? Holy cow. That deserves something. It is 9:56. John, go get them. Whatever their sergeant at arms, he fell asleep. All right, let's go. John, you're going the wrong way.
President.
All for you.
I know everybody was thankful for that.
You owe me.
All right. John, we do have HR laws.
But I haven't had a drink yet.
He's signed nothing, right?
My wife hates it because we'll go on trips and I'm gonna have a...
I do, I do.
We got five hours left. We're done from here.
We're missing one. Regina, she's probably able to go. Joe's right there. Joe, you gonna stand? I was surprised to see you sit by the time. Man, about that talking, I needed one. Long day. Okay. Wait, Regina. Should have gone away from the room. Can we censure for being too late?
I appreciate it.
Oh, great. Thank you. You're gonna lease without you? Council's now back in session. Before we do third readings, we just made light of a situation regarding 4118. Mr. Palmer, would you please explain?
By speeding law, the council cannot vote on the transfer budget until 10 days have passed since public hearings. So the transfer budget will be voted on until next meeting in October.
So do we have to undo the vote we did? No. We just need to make a motion to adjourn. Okay. All right. We'll go down the line. Ms. Fowler, would you please give third reading to 3618?
3618, third reading on ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance properly located at 1939, 1947, Charles Street, Councilman Nick District Number Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Motion for passage.
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty.
Aye.
Councilmember Furley.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
I'd like to make a motion to continue 4118 in the council portion only to...
10-8. Second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. 4218, please.
Third reading on ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for service departmental and city service operations in 2018. $672,857 from the economic development state grant fund to 10. $1 million from the DCI grant fund to 11. $5,000 from the gift donation request fund to 17. $699,700 from the liability insurance premium reserve fund to 26. Minus $960,000 from the Loet 2015 special distribution fund number 257. Minus $332,000 from the local road and bridge grant fund to 65. $28,100 from the economic revenue bond to 81. Minus $55,000 from the Purple Esq stadium capital fund forum. Minus $124,050 from the U D A G fund number 410. $28,100 from the redevelopment general fund 433. And $650 from the smart street debt service fund 756.
Motion for passage.
Second.
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Teschka.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty.
Aye.
Councilmember Furley.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
I'd like to make a motion to continue 4118 in the council portion only to...
10-8. Second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. 4218, please.
Third reading on ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for service departmental and city service operations in 2018. $672,857 from the economic development state grant fund to 10. $1 million from the DCI grant fund to 11. $5,000 from the gift donation request fund to 17. $699,700 from the liability insurance premium reserve fund to 26. Minus $960,000 from the Loet 2015 special distribution fund number 257. Minus $332,000 from the local road and bridge grant fund to 65. $28,100 from the economic revenue bond to 81. Minus $55,000 from the Purple Esq stadium capital fund forum. Minus $124,050 from the U D A G fund number 410. $28,100 from the redevelopment general fund 433. And $650 from the smart street debt service fund 756.
Motion for passage.
Second.
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Teschka.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. 4318.
4318, third reading on ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for the year 2018.
With the passage.
Second. Ms. Fowler?
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty.
Aye.
Councilmember Furley.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty, I mean Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. 4418.
4418, third reading on ordinance authorizing for issuance and sale of an aggregate principal amount to not exceeding $4,205,000 of the city of South Bend, Indiana, economic development revenue bond series 2018, Potawatomi project, and authorizing and improving other actions in respect thereto.
Motion for passage.
Second.
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Vorty.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. First readings, 4518, please.
4518, first reading on ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, set the annual salary for the mayor for the calendar year 2019.
I move Bill 4518 be set for second reading and public hearing on 10-8 and be sent to the personnel finance committee. Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. 4618.
4618, first reading on ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, set the annual salary for the common council members for calendar year 2019.
Motion, this be set for second reading and public hearing on 10-8 and referred to the personnel finance committee.